Good evening, we're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand and join me with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Flanges.
I hear.
Vice Chair Moody, Commissioner Goins.
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Schlemm.
Present.
Commissioner Bonner.
Present.
Thank you.
Please note that Vice Chair Moody is excused this evening.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting, and I thank you. All comments, let's go to number four, which is public comment. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street, on item number 11. And this just goes to the lot orientation in general. I think that lot orientations or the roofs, the roofs of the houses should be orientated to the south so they can accommodate solar panels. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? If you'll state your name and address, please?
My name is Bridget Salvi. I live at 7030 North Conquistador Street. It's actually in the county. There's a project here tonight, items number 10, 11, and 12. I'd like to bring out of the one motion, one vote, and ask for it to be brought as a separate discussion.
Certainly.
Thank you.
We'll do that when we get to it. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Pete Woodward. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association at 200 West Sahara, and I'm here about the special use permit for the tattoo parlor in the retail space. So, I'm just here representing the community, the thousand.
Are you, are you wanting anything pulled right now? Are you talking about the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda, or do you have a specific item you're here for tonight?
Well, I'm here for the item 14, the special use permit for the tattoo shop.
Okay, and you'd like to have that pulled as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard?
And also, Director, is anyone here to speak on number nine? We have three protests. It's in Councilwoman Tarkanian's ward, and if there's anybody here to speak on it, we'll be willing to hear from you. If not, we'll leave it at the one motion, one vote.
So, Commissioner, you want to leave item number nine in the...
I'm going to leave it because no one's here to speak on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on now to item number five, which is the minutes. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of May 14, 2013? Commissioner Goins?
Commissioner motion to approve.
Please vote. The minutes of the meeting of May 14, 2013 are approved. Moving on to item number six, which is the housekeeping items. Are there any items that Commissioner, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action? And just going with what we had before, it looks like we're going to have items 10, 11, and 12 pulled, and it also appears that we're going to have item 14 pulled. Anybody else wish any other items to be pulled? Seeing none, we'll move on. We now need to staff on the housekeeping items.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. The following items have been requested to be held in abeyance to the July 9, 2013 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 19, VAR 47494. This is the third abeyance request made by the applicant pertaining to these items, and as such, the Planning Commission must determine upon good cause shown that the granting of the additional continuance is warranted pursuant to NRS. At this time, the applicant is requesting the abeyance to re-notify the application based upon revisions made while working with staff. Item number 25, SUP 48180. Item number 26, SUP 48181. Item number 27, SUP 48182. Items number 34 and 35, VAR 49137 and SDR 49136. Item number 43, SUP 49154. Item number 49, TXT 49225. And the following item has been requested to be held in abeyance to the August 13, 2013 Planning Commission. Item number 46, TXT 48048. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, one other item. For number item 18, I'd like to request an abeyance.
19?
18.
18?
18.
Okay. At this time, does anybody wish to be heard on any of these items?
Pardon me, which meeting for number 18?
We didn't get your name and address.
Todd Kessler, 300 North Las Vegas Boulevard, 89101. I would request that number 18 be obeyed to the next Planning Commission.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the housekeeping items. Commissioner Goins?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the housekeeping items as read into the record.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote.
Do you need the chair?
Please post. Motion carries. Okay, we're going now to move on to the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. I'm going to begin with items 7, 8, and 9, which are all related. Item number 7, ZON 48887. The applicant is the Machuca Family Medicine Owner, 6060 Elton LLC. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential to PO Professional Office on 0.20 acres at 100 South Jones Boulevard, Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Item, the related item number 8, which is VAR 48886. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow six parking spaces where seven spaces are required. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 9, which is also related, SDR 48885. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for the proposed conversion of a 1,354-square-foot, single-family residential dwelling to a professional office with a waiver of perimeter landscape buffer standards to allow a zero-foot buffer along the east and south perimeter where eight feet is required. Staff is recommending approval. Items number 10, 11, and 12 are being pulled, and so I'll move on now to item number 13, which is SUP 49108. The applicant is NMT Enterprise LLC. The owner is 333 MSA Fremont 2 LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer wine cooler on-sale establishment within an existing 1,800-square-foot restaurant with a waiver to allow a 100-foot distance separation from a church where 400 feet is required at 7660 West Cheyenne Avenue, Suite 122 in Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. Item number 14 is asked to be pulled, so we'll move on now to item number 15, which is SUP 49177. The applicant is Above the Lights Bonanza Cat Hospital. The owner is 2010-1 RADCC CADC Venture LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for an animal hospital, clinic, or shelter without outside pens, and a waiver of the Town Center Development Standards to allow an animal hospital, clinic, or shelter without outside pens to be located on a 70-foot wide street where the minimum street width allowed is 80-foot at 6620 Sky Point Drive in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Moving on to item number 16, which is SUP 49178. The applicant is House of Bargains Owner, Lake Mead Decatur LLP. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a secondhand dealer with a waiver to allow a 6,600-square-foot area where 5,000 square feet is the maximum allowed at 1917 North Decatur Boulevard, Ward 5, Councilman Bartle. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 17, which is the final item in the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda, is VAC 49335. Applicant owner, SH Northeast Land Company LLC. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a 20-foot public drainage easement and the eastern three-foot portion of the 20-foot public sewer easement on property generally located north of Sahara Avenue, east of Walupi Way in Ward 2, Councilman Beers. Staff is recommending approval. Is there anybody which to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion on the one motion and one vote portion of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve items 7, 8, 9, 13, 15, 16, and 17, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, items number 7, 8, 9, 16, and 17 will go forward to the July 24 City Council meeting, and items number 13 and 15 are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you, Director. Now, we're going to move on to items 10, 11, and 12, which were pulled from the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda. I will be abstaining on this matter because I have a brother that owns property that's involved in this transaction or this application. So, Commissioner Goins, if you'll take over, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 10, WVR 49163, waiver, public hearing. Applicant owner, D.R. Horton, Inc. For a possible action on a request for a waiver to allow an external intersection separation distance of 280 feet where 220 feet is required on 41.14 acres at the southeast corner of Dorrell Lane and Walupi Way, Ward 6. Item 11, TMP 49164. Applicant, D.R. Horton. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for a proposed 18-lot, single-family residential subdivision on 4.14 acres at the southeast corner of Dorrell Lane and Walupi Way, Ward 6. Item 12, VAC 949184. Vacation related to WVR 49163. D.R. Horton. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a 30-foot-wide portion of Haley Avenue and a U.S. government patent easement generally located at the southeast corner of Dorrell Lane and Walupi Way, Ward 6. Staff?
Commissioner, the proposed map is in conformance with Title 19 and the matter of vice statutes' requirements for a tentative map. The separation distance between intersections on the perimeter of the site does not pose any safety risks, and the existing right-of-way and patent easements are not needed. Staff therefore recommends approval of the proposed tentative map, subject to conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward.
If we could have the applicant as well.
Let me pause for a moment and hear from the applicant right quick, and then we'll come over to you, Ms.
Hi, Darren Papa, 5740 South Arville with Slater Hanfins Group, and I represent D.R. Horton, the developer and property owner. And basically, what you have before you is a tentative map, a waiver on vacations for an 18-lot subdivision, inconformist to all city standards. We are requesting to vacate a portion of Haley, which is at the southern boundary. That access currently is not used, and so we thought we could utilize that area, vacate it, and utilize it for larger lots, which is kind of more in conformance to the rural nature of the area. And that's really it. We're vacating patent easements, which are necessary for the development. We have standard public streets at the perimeter and serving the 18 lots, and we concur with staff's recommendations, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ma'am? Your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, good evening. My name is Bridget Salvi at 7030 North Conquistador Street. I live directly to the east of this property in discussion. I brought a map that was just off your GIS Open Web Mapper.
Just put it right on the center, and you can speak into that microphone right in the center as well.
All right, so I'm assuming that this map here will be oriented for your view. The subject property happens to be this piece right here. It's caught by a light highlight. What I'd like to say is that there are times when a proposed plan, such as this one by D.R. Horton, intends with the best motives to improve connectivity and without any input from the community, sometimes in these specific areas of the RMP neighborhoods, that there will be impacts that generate more conflict and more detriment than as realized initially. My attention should be drawn to mostly the vacation of Haley versus the flip side of vacating the Dorrell. Both of them have sections that are already pre-designated as right-of-way from previous owners. So, my intention is to draw attention and basically flip the map top to bottom by the If these proposals are approved as presented right today, they initiate the paving and the future connection of Dorrell, east to west, between Walupi and Grand Canyon. On its face...
Can you point to that on your map?
Yeah. It would be between Walupi to the west, Dorrell making a connection through the RMP as a straight bisect to Grand Canyon on the east. It is not highlighted, but it is this indication.
Okay.
On its face, this looks like a logical and a good idea. However, when you consider that it is bisecting the RMP, in this lower section of the RMP has the highest intensity of horse dwellings where people have boarding and their own, they have a business that boards horses, my immediate neighbor to my north, and other horses that are living in close proximity to my other neighbors. Between their image and this one, what this property will do is basically a trigger property that if Dorrell is paved for this project, that's the city, and the sister project as a footprint right next to it, to the west, or to the east, sits on a county portion, both of these will require paving because of off-site improvements of water and other utilities that are brought to their complex. If we can alleviate that paving by flipping this project north to south and use Haley as our access point...
Can you point to Haley?
Haley would be this lower, southern portion of their property perimeter. If we don't flip this project and flip the vacation by having it wait 30 days and go through the notification process, the potential of Dorrell going through triggers on this project here, the sister project next to it in the county, and another project by Toll Brothers at Grand Canyon and Dorrell on the other side. Between these developers and the third that's running to the south, there will be a straight thoroughfare, a complete bisect of the RMP and our neighborhood and our homes and our horses. That all of this will do is give less than a half-mile, or approximately a half-mile, based on my judgment call, of a road diversion that still drops you on a T-intersection of Grand Canyon, where the driver and all the travelers are still going to have to go north or south. So, the alleviation of Dorrell keeps traffic from Providence, a high-intensity area, directly to the west of this location property, keeps all that traffic on Dorrell, I mean, off Dorrell, keeps it on Walupi, as intended, keeps it on Deer Springs, as intended, sends it north if they choose at the further build-out of Elkhorn, as intended, because these roads, Elkhorn, Deer Springs, Walupi are all the same size. They are all intended to hold the intensity of flow of traffic, not Dorrell, through the middle of the RMP. The idea for me, and to persuade you if I can, is to hold this project for 30 days so that further discussion can be held, because there is an alternative. The neighbors in the RMP are, have been in discussion, I've been instigating and implementing it, with three developers, D.R. Horton, who's presented here tonight, Toll Brothers, who has a large development scattered throughout the RMP, and these are all county projects at this point, and Richmond American, which runs directly to the south. It's 35.4 Richmond American, 35.4 acres. So, all of this together with this one as the trigger will decide if Dorrell goes through. Our intention is that Dorrell does not go through. It serves no positive purpose as it would bisect the most intense portion of the county RMP in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak for or against this item? Please come up.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I think the lady makes a good point there. The other thing I want to know is, in Providence, they had a demonstration house out there, the ultimate sustainable living out there. And I wonder if D.R. Horton is going to build these houses such as the demonstration house was, or to meet those standards, or if this is just going to be another run-of-the-mill?
Thank you. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. We'll ask the applicant if he'd like to make a couple of comments in regards to, I guess, a couple of issues that the neighbor has pointed out. One in particular, I don't think a neighborhood meeting was required on this, but if at all there's a flavor to hold it and talk about it, what's your feeling?
At this point, I don't feel that's the case. You know, we did our due diligence up front. We looked at the different options. The most logical was that Dorrell would go through, and we didn't think that would be supported by, you know, requesting that as a vacated right-of-way to be supported. So, we've moved forward with this layout. I think it's a lot to ask to revise the whole layout. You know, our impact is 18 lots. We do have another project that's in the county adjacent to it. It's 15 lots. We're just following, you know, the city guidelines for the design, and, I mean, technically, we don't have to vacate Haley, but we saw, you know, this is an alignment that's currently not in use, so we utilized that to distribute that area so we could have larger lots. And really, that's all I have to add.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll open it up to members of the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman?
We'll start, Commissioner Truesdale.
I appreciate what the lady mentioned about Dorrell, and I can understand their concerns. But from what we have been presented, Dorrell, most of Dorrell has already been dedicated. A lot of it's already been improved. When you look at Haley, most of the dedications aren't in place, and there is little or no improvement along the Haley alignment. So, to go through and push this over and block out Dorrell, I understand the desire, and I understand the concerns, but it would say, all the planning that has gone before it in the county and here, and the alignment of Dorrell, all the way to Grand Canyon, we'd have right-of-ways, we'd continue to have the sawtooth, and I think, I don't think you would get what the neighbors had envisioned, other than the ultimate RMP issues, but I just think we, to not have this open on to Dorrell would be a mistake with all the right-of-way that's already been set up, so.
Commissioner Bonner?
Yeah, I have a series of questions. May I ask staff first? The applicant has something already invested in the property. What rights does he have with what he's already submitted, or is it all at risk up until he gets the first level of approval for his tentative map?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant has already submitted a rezoning for the site that has been approved. You saw that at your April meeting. There was a neighborhood meeting held for that rezoning. The applicant did present the tentative map at that neighborhood meeting, and that was reported at the April meeting. So, the investment at this point is there is an entitlement for zoning. They're now seeking the tentative map, and they do require a waiver for the external intersection separation, and that's what they're seeking at this time.
Okay. I guess what I was building toward is, it actually sounds like a logical alternative that Ms. Salvi has suggested, but it comes at a cost. There's a time lost and a cost of redoing engineering drawings, so I just don't know how aware the neighborhood might be that would come at a cost. Whether there's willingness to share that cost in some way, that's yet to be determined. I think, I'm going to skip around a little bit. The vacation of the Haley is at least premature and maybe not even in order, depending on how this whole matter unfolds. Dorrell, even though Dorrell would go all the way through, it tees into Grand Canyon at the east end, as would either Haley or vendors on the north side of the Dorrell alignment. I do note that most of the developed horse properties are in the center along the Dorrell alignment, so there's a sympathy, at least, of trying to maintain the RMP, because it's a fairly well-established RMP, and I think most of the people who've been in this valley for a long time respect that and want to preserve it to the extent that it can be. Couple other points, even though Haley's not used now, sir, the grid pattern is alive and well in this valley, so it's a poor excuse to say, just because it's not used, you wait your turn. This is partly a city-county problem because we're at that juncture where the city and the county have had to deal with this for a couple of decades now. And if there was a little more coordination, let's say, among and between the city, the county, the neighborhood, the developers, and there's more than one developer actually in this mix, there'd be a lot easier decision-making here tonight. In fact, so much of what is facing on these three applications, I'm not sure I'm ready to make a decision tonight, but before I think of anything more... to make a decision tonight, but before I think of anything more that I want to ask, I'll throw it back to the chair.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I just wanted to say that, that when there's so many hands in a, in a basket of so many different things shuffling around here, and people like this lady here that's been here for so long, I think that we owe her, at, at the very least, a neighborhood meeting, at the very least. And you will not see my support tonight until we, you all sit down with her out of respect for her, the, the time that she's owned this property, she can gather, I'm sure, her neighbors up if she can. And, and, you know, this is important to her, you know, it's, it's another house to you. This is her livelihood, this is, you know, this is important to me. And so my suggestion at this time would be to hold a neighborhood meeting and bring everybody to the table. Thank you.
Commissioner Slotzer.
Yes, through you. One question. D.R. Horton owns this property and the property adjacent to it.
Correct.
And then all the properties to the, I guess that would be to the east of their, Richmond American is gonna be constructing homes, and Richmond American's gonna be constructing all the improvements on Dorell, all the way up to your site.
Correct.
So if we don't approve this, it's basically gonna leave, what, two city blocks of Dorell not, not connected?
Correct. If I could add, we, we did have a neighborhood meeting for the zone, the zone change for this property. And last night, we had a neighborhood meeting for the property to the east, which is in the county. And we are also, we have applied to vacate Haley, and we have county's full support on, on that. And Richmond American has an application to vacate Haley in the county, and I was told that they've been approved to vacate Haley for an additional portion to the east.
Do you know if the note, notice on those meetings, how, how many, I, I don't know what the county, how many?
I'm not sure what the radius is.
Seven fifty, or do you know if those city folks were mailed?
I do not know.
Or Ms. Solvi, you're in that area where?
She was aware of it, and she's been working with, with Richmond American, I understand.
No. You'll, you'll need to come up to the mic. I need you on the record, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Goins. I received no actual notification in the mail because I was outside the perimeter. The density of the county area per the distance for the radius of notification is either a distance or a number of people.
Right.
And that intensity was gathered from the city side in Providence, so I believe there was one property that is inhabited. The others are vacant because they were under escrow or undeveloped. There's only one in the county that actually received a postcard that I'm aware of. I did not myself.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Mr. Chair.
Let me go back to Commissioner and then.
Yes, and so I, I can appreciate the, the person's comments about not wanting to have the street go through, but personally, when I'm driving on Valley View or Post or Sunset, and I know it goes from one side of town to the other, but for certain blocks, it either comes to a dead end or to, to a dirt road, and it becomes pretty frustrating driving streets in this town and not being able to connect from one side to the other. And that's exactly what we're doing here, because Dorell is gonna come all the way down to the last two properties, and then there'll be, it'll be blocked off, dirt road, whatever. And then Dorell picks up again and carries how far west, I don't know, but I would, I would support the applications before us today.
Commissioner Truesdale.
I was just wanting to know if the people in the county were able to make the zoning neighborhood meeting, because I know the applicant held a meeting, so I, I'm, I'm not so sure if we do anybody more service by more meetings, more meetings. I mean, there, there's been several out in this area and several concerning this particular property on the zoning side, so I just want to know if she was able to make that meeting or any of her neighbors.
If you were to make that.
The answer is, is no. Thank you. Well, we've heard enough testimony on, on, on both sides on this item. At this time, the chairman will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Truesdale.
In light of what was presented, I would make a motion to follow Staff's recommendation for approval. I gotta get the right number here for us. Item number ten.
Item number ten. There is a motion on the floor. Recommendation is for approval. And that motion for approval has failed. Would anybody like to offer a motion for denial?
I would. I'd like to make-
Or, or another recommendation.
I'd like to make the motion for denial on, was that number ten? We're talking about number ten?
That is correct.
Yeah, on item number ten, waiver four nine one six three at this time. Asking for some more time to get together, so my motion would be for denial. Yes vote would be denial.
Just to clarify before the action's taken, if I might, Commissioner Quinn, by denying the application, that means the application goes away. We don't consider it again. Is your motion actually to hold the item in abeyance?
Yeah, it's actually to hold it in abeyance-
Okay.
-until we can figure out what else we can do with it.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney is?
Right, hold it. That's fine, you just have to tell us when you want to hold it in abeyance to. You want to hold it in abeyance to the next meeting or two meetings, or?
What would you suggest, City Attorney? Because it's a county too, right?
Let me ask the applicant this. If you had a neighborhood meeting, how long would it take you to stage this and put it together if you went along with the request of the commission?
We would attempt to set it up as soon as possible, first available. I'm not sure what the timeframe is. We need to reserve a room, but if we could get it within a couple, a week and a half or, or so.
If this were continued then for one, till one meeting, to the first meeting in June, or excuse me, July, would that be enough time?
Yes.
Then I, the motion is to continue-
And if it's-
-to the first meeting in July?
So my motion would be for thirty days and to ensure that there's a neighborhood meeting held prior to the next meeting. And if not, then we'll hold it till the next meeting, so.
Mr. Chairman. One moment. Commissioner Baldar.
Yeah, I wonder if I could ask the maker of the motion to amend it to add representatives of the other developer and the county, so we can talk about maybe some traffic slowing devices along Dorell, as there are examples already available to slowing traffic on a collective road.
Commissioner Valdare, I'm gonna defer that to Attorney Gerbig because I don't know clearly about inviting another jurisdiction to, to a meeting.
Right, not just inviting another jurisdiction, a whole nother topic that we're not agended for. So this will just be hold it in abeyance for, until the next meeting, thirty days, with the understanding that you'll hold a neighborhood meeting, and whatever you discuss, you discuss, is your business, but you clearly know the direction of the commission.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, Commissioner Quinn, would you like to restate your motion?
My, my motion is for thirty days to hold a neighborhood meeting. That's July ninth. It's a July ninth?
Yes, the next meeting is this July ninth, Planning Commission.
July ninth?
So we'll, we'll hold this item until July ninth, and in between now and July ninth, a neighborhood meeting will be held. Okay? That is the motion. Please cast your vote. You post?
Oh, I posted already.
Okay, that motion has passed. Item eleven?
Oh, item eleven. Try me to make a motion.
Yes, I need a motion on item eleven.
I'll, I'll make the same motion for item number eleven. WVR, I'm sorry, TMP four nine one six four, for thirty days to ensure a neighborhood meeting in that one as well.
Thank you. There's a motion to hold item TMP four nine one six four for a period of thirty days, and in between that, a neighborhood meeting will be held. Please cast your vote.
Thank you.
And that motion has passed. Item number twelve.
And moving on to item number twelve, which is, which is the vacation four nine one eight four, the same motion of thirty days from today with a neighborhood meeting in between.
Motion's on the floor on item twelve. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. I just want to, applicant, when you notice on this, when you're mailing, try to make sure you get as far out as Ms. Solvi, or at least get her address and invite her out as well. Because I know you're gonna have that county, city radius that you're dealing with, but, but try to notify as many households within that area as possible.
I, I think that the radius is based on the actual zoning, and it's kind of set the, the zone that they noticed, but we'll, we'll do what we can to.
Yep.
Could you exchange information now so there's no problems later?
I've got to remember.
Okay, thanks a lot.
I'll turn it back over to the chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Goins. We're now gonna move on to item fourteen, which was pulled also from the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda. Item number fourteen is SUP four nine one six seven. The applicant is George H. Rodriguez. Owner is G Capital Investments LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a tattoo parlor slash body piercing studio use at two hundred West Sahara Boulevard, Ward Three, Councilman Kaufman. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna abstain on this item inasmuch as I own an interest in property within the notice area.
Mr. Chairman, the tattoo body piercing studio use is consistent with the surrounding area can be, and can be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this request. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please? Okay, now seeing an applicant, I'll go ahead and open this up for public discussion at this point. And if you could all state your name and address, please, I'd appreciate it.
Hi, Pete Woodward, two hundred West Sahara, unit number twenty-six twelve. I'm the actual president of the Homeowners Association for the Allure High-Rise Condominiums.
Thank you, ma'am.
Kenyatta Robinson. I'm the general manager for Allure High-Rise, twenty-nine seventeen Tropic Bird, northwest.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Woodward.
Well, I'm here representing the over a thousand homeowners that live in the building, and we're asking that you actually deny the special use permit.
We don't feel that it is conducive. Allure is a luxury high-rise.
Just a moment, ma'am, I just want to make sure he's finished, then I'll give you the floor.
Yeah, she can take it from here.
Okay, thank you. All right. Your turn.
Thank you. We disagree that having the tattoo and piercing shop in the building is conducive to what is already there. It's a luxury high-rise. It's in the base of our building. In fact, it would go in right next to my office, which is the HOA office. It's just not something that the residents want. Since you sent the last postcard, I, my office has been flooded with heinous emails and, and phone messages, so we are asking that you deny it. It's not appropriate for our building.
No, thank you. Has anybody else wished to be heard on this matter? And ma'am, again, would you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Marilyn Montague, two hundred West Sahara Ave, unit twenty-six oh four. I live and own a unit. I live there full-time in Allure, and I've spoken with a lot of homeowners, and every single person I speak with disagrees, literally every person. And a few issues right from the start I noticed is, first of all, this is the first notification that I received. I'm not sure why. There was no neighborhood meeting, as she suggested. This is the first notice that I received about it, and they, I believe a lot more homeowners would be present, other than the fact that the address that they listed on the front of this card identifies the meeting date and time and location, and for location, it says four hundred Stewart Ave. I had directions on MapQuest to go to four hundred Stewart Ave, and then at the last minute, I just happened to drop into the HOA office and found out it was located here. So I think we lack representation because of that fact in itself. Like I said before, there wasn't, and this is the first notification I received than anybody else. I, I bought my unit, not only do I live there, and I love living there, it's a great place, but I bought it as investment for long-term, and this would be detrimental to my investment and everybody else in the building. I don't have anything against tattoo or body piercing, but I don't think it is appropriate in a high-rise luxury condominium where our fees are astronomical. You know, I, it doesn't, you understand what I'm saying. We're paying for that luxury, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I under-
Plenty.
I appreciate your comments. I'm gonna kind of cut you off, and the reason I'm gonna cut you off is I've been informed by staff that there were some wrong addresses on these cards that went out, and so what I'm gonna do now is I'm just gonna ask one of the commissioners to make a motion to obey this and hold it for thirty days so that the appropriate notification can go out, so people such as yourself who are in the notification area will get the proper notice on this. Commissioner?
Make a request clearly. This is gonna be heard. You might want to take it off the one motion, one vote agenda, put it on the discussion agenda, and also notify the applicant that they need to be here for it.
Certainly. And then with that said, would one of the commissioners like to make a motion on this? Mr. Chairman, on item fourteen, move to hold this item, SUP four nine one six seven for thirty days. I don't know, there were two people that just walked in. Were you guys here on item fourteen?
I was.
The tattoo parlor?
No.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Chairman, that's the motion. Thank you, Commissioner Goins.
One last comment?
No, ma'am, I, we're done. Thank you. Please post. Motion to hold this in abeyance for thirty days carries noting Commissioner Truesdale's Okay, we're now gonna move on to the public hearing portion, and we'll begin with item number eighteen, which is WVR four eight nine seven zero. The applicant owner is two zero eight Las Vegas Boulevard LLC.
Mr. Chairman, we held this item in abeyance for thirty days as part of the housekeeping portion of the agenda-
Oh, that's right.
...at the request of the applicant.
Thank you, Director. I've missed on that. We're gonna move on now to items number twenty-one, or excuse me, items number twenty and twenty-one, which are both related. Because I do have a conflict on this, having represented the, the applicant's representative as with my law firm, I'm gonna have to abstain on this, and Commissioner Goins, you're gonna pick it up again if you don't mind? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item twenty, abeyance VAR four seven eight three five. Applicant owner, Canay Holdings, for possible, possible action on a request for a variance to allow an off-premise sign to be attached to a building where off-premise signs are required to be detached and permanently secured to the ground on eight point one four acres at five 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 zero Painted Mirage Road, Ward Four, Councilman Anthony. Related item twenty-one, abeyance SUP four seven eight three four, special use permit related to VAR four seven eight three five. Public hearing, applicant owner, Canay, Canay Holdings, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for an off-premise sign at five 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 zero Painted Mirage Road, C two, Ward Four. Staff?
Commissioner, the applicant is proposing to convert an approved twenty-foot by thirty-two-foot LED wall sign on the east elevation of the building to an off-premise sign. Pursuant to Title nineteen point twelve of the Las Vegas Municipal Code, off-premise signs are to be detached and permanently secured to the ground. As the proposed conver- As the proposed conversion fails to comply with the regulations set forth for such a use, staff is recommending denial of the requested variance in SUP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Commissioners, George Garcia, seventeen-eleven Whitney Mesa Drive, Suite one-ten. If we can go to the overhead. The requirements, of course, are twofold. One for the special use permit, one for the variance. In this particular case, one of the requirements is, first off, that we're not within three hundred feet of residential. And the radius basically depicted here indicates that we meet that. We also need to face the ninety-five, which you can see from the exhibit that we also, which are on the east face of the building, which is a five-story building, and we face directly into the, into the freeway. And actually, this is the interchange you see depicted here. One of the other requirements is that we meet a certain square footage, which we are less than the square footage at six-hundred-and-seventy-two square feet. So we're within the, all of the requirements for an SUP. And they're required also in the section of the code regarding off-premise signs for locational criteria. And we meet all those criteria, we believe, for the use permit. And I think the, the real question then becomes, you know, what, what is appropriate then as to the variance, which is the next related item to this. And in that, in this matter, the part of it, of course, as you know, a variance is, you know, not a, it's not a self-created hardship. And the interchange is what, in part, creates the need for raising the height of the building. The second part of this is that we're asking to move the off-premise sign, instead of doing it in the conventional way and putting it on a pole, which is typically not particularly attractive, very, you know, very visible, a structure that supports the sign. And instead, we're asking to put the sign on the building. So the height portion of it is caused by the interchange itself, which in this particular exhibit, you can see that we're substantially kinda buried below the ramp portion here and of the interchange. And you can see it from the other side, just a portion exactly how far below from visibly where we are below.
Could I get you to pull that mic up just a little bit so we can see the overhead there?
There, how's that?
Thank you.
So the, so here you can see we're depressed quite a bit. In fact, we're depressed to the point that I can show you probably in this exhibit, and this is in your backup. Here's the building that you're looking at facing on the, on the east side of it. This is the actual height of the, of the, of the interchange. And if you go thirty feet above that, you can basically see, that's basically about where we placed the sign. And that's basically what the code contemplates in terms of one of its provisions is that may be erected when thirty feet above the elevation of an elevated roadway surface nearest the sign. So we're basically at about that height, and again, caused by a hardship, governmental-created hardship, which is the interchange that was constructed. We had nothing to do in terms of that. The other reason so that you can see just exactly how well, I guess, that becomes important, and I'll just illustrate here a little bit if you can see this. Again, visually from the building, what we did is we took a standard, basically billboard height, in this case at fifty feet. And you can see it obstructs the normal location for any billboard. So while we could place this on a pole, both we would need to have the pole and then elevate it up where you see the sign depicted here, again, on the east face of the building. And we've done that again here, looking from another direction here. Again, with the standard fifty-foot height, it's not visible. Again, we elevated it, so it would be visible. And basically, I think you can see, they're very clearly there, the need for the raising the height. We prefer not to do it on a pole. We simply think that that's not as attractive. This is a very high-quality building. It's a medical building, for the most part. And it's well-designed and attractive. We think a typical pole would detract from that. But we could certainly do a pole, run it up to this height, and then cantilever the sign along the side of the building. But again, we would request to ask you, as the planning commission, to recognize that that's a less aesthetic choice. And put it on the building, and then grant us the variance for both removing it from the pole and the height necessary to elevate it above the freeway interchange. With that, commissioners, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open it up to comments from the commissioners. Mr. Truesdale?
Yeah. And I've, I've talked with Mr. Garcia about this. And I, I understand their desire to do a billboard on this site. And if that was strictly before us, I'd look at it differently. And then, we have just gone through a rather long and protracted, I can't tell you how many votes we did, dealing with building reps or an off-premise advertising with regards to existing buildings where we went through heights and this and that. I realize the freeway is there. There's no guarantee that we would approve the SUP for a billboard in one regard. But to start approving billboards on the side of every medical building along the freeway, I think would open a Pandora's Box with regards to any kind of controls that our current sign code has. And I can't support that. I, I, I guess I missed the need to put an off-premise sign on, on this medical building. But I just, I can't support this in this regard.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonner?
Yeah, I, I have no problem at all with the height. I mean, if you're gonna have a sign, you might as well be able to see it. And the freeway has done to us in more than one location what this freeway interchange has done in this location. I don't even think of this as a billboard. It's a building sign that could just as easily be on a pole as was presented, whether it's a flag or a straight-up pole in the middle of the, of the sign. I don't know that it would be a precedent setter in that respect, but how we treat this one, you know, should be fair. And if it's gonna be a billboard sign, you know, let's see it above the freeway.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments, Commissioner? Nope, no comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Just, just a couple of comments. I, I guess the question becomes, do you wanna, do you wanna request for a, what is this, a fourteen by forty-eight?
The actual dimensions on it for the sign are, I have to go back and look, the, are nineteen point nine by thirty-one point nine, basically.
So, so the request would be to put that either on, on a pole, which would, I would, I would suspect he would be requesting an additional variance for the height to get it up there to see it. And so we, we'd see a sign similar to this against this beautiful building on, on a pole. So I guess that, that, that's what it becomes, whether you want it detached and up on there in that form of fashion or, or a pole sign. So I don't know if we'd open a Pandora's Box. I know each one of these is on a, on a case-by-case basis. But if I had to have the lesser of two requests, I'd rather go with a nice board up on the building that was depicted that can be seen from, from the freeway in a nice, in a nice fashion.
Commissioner Goines?
Mr. Truesdale?
Unless I misunderstood the application before us, the SUP is for a billboard. We don't have to approve a billboard at this location. I mean, it's not, it's not a given have-to to have it in this residential corridor out here. But to start modifying our sign codes to come up with, this will be the first of many that want off-premise advertising on, on these, these buildings. And there's, these LED signs are gonna be everywhere. If we do this, the next step will be very easy to take a shopping center sign, like across the street, make it an off-premise sign, just by, by the idea that people want a billboard. Advertising of the, for this building and the clients and the customers within this building is appropriate. But advertising to everybody along the roadway there is something that we raised a higher standard for special use permits. And now we're, we're talking about starting to put these on buildings. There's a three, four-story building along Salmon Parkway that I think would love to have one of these if we start going down this road. I think there's the, some of the buildings we looked at that we didn't want building reps on because they were outside of the core of downtown. Suddenly, we will substitute the argument for these LED signs. And I don't think that's what our, when we went through all of those machinations, I don't think that was the intent, but I think this opens that up.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
First off, I can understand the commissioner's concerns, but I think currently the code has specific locational provisions, and we meet all those locational provisions. There's also a section of the code that talks very specifically about off-premise exclusionary zones. So if the desire is to ultimately exclude signage in a corridor, the code already does that in some areas, and certainly it could be expanded to include whatever it wants. But currently, the code does not exclude this area for off-premise signs. It says you can do it in this area, and it lists the criteria. And we do meet those criteria as far as an off-premise sign. As an on-premise sign, we already can do the sign. It's already been permitted. Off-premise sign is what we're seeking. And then we're asking for the variances so that it's not on a pole. But I think we meet all the requirements in the code. If the desire ultimately is to change the code to prohibit off-premise signs, then I think that that would be something perhaps that could be considered. But that's, I don't think, currently what the code says.
Thank you. Seeing no more comments from the commission, at this time, I'll entertain a motion on item twenty.
Mr. Chairman? I'm taking another look at the, the backup material, and I see the city of Las Vegas has a billboard location right across the freeway and the other side of the freeway. That's a billboard. I think the case has been made for the locational criteria of a billboard. To me, it's not critical whether it's on a pole or on a building. It's, it's a billboard. And in regard to the height, there's plenty of justification for raising it above what conditions the raised interchange has created for the applicant. So I move to approve item number twenty, VAR forty-seven-eight-three-five, with the if-approved staff conditions.
Motion's on the floor for approval. Subject to staff recommendation conditions. Cast your vote. And that motion has passed with Chairman Flingis abstaining. Item twenty-one, Mr. Chairman, move to approve item twenty-one, abeyance SUP forty-seven-eight-three-four. Again, in conformance with all the if-approved staff recommendations. Motion on the floor for item twenty-one is a yes vote, and that yes vote is for approval. And that motion has passed with Chairman Flingis abstaining. Director?
Please note for the record that these two cases will go forward to the July twenty-fourth City Council meeting.
I will turn it back over to the chairman for item twenty-two.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're gonna start with items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, which are all related. Item twenty-two, VAR four-eight-eight-two-seven. The applicant is Concrete Solutions. The owner is Jaime Lopez and Refugio Espinoza Lopez. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a fourteen-foot side yard setback where fifty feet is required adjacent to residential districts at four-five-one-five Balsam Street, Ward Four, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending denial. Item number twenty-three, VAR four-eight-eight-two-eight, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow no wall on the north property line where a six-foot screen wall is required adjacent to residential property, to allow outdoor storage within setback and landscape buffer areas, and to allow an existing seven-foot chain-link fence with mesh screening where a solid structure or a wall of eight feet is required. Staff is recommending denial. Item number twenty-four, SDR four-eight-eight-two-six, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for the conversion of an existing two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-four-square-foot single-family residence to a contractor's plant, shop, and storage yard office with waivers of perimeter landscape buffer standards to allow zero feet on the north property line and two feet on the south property line where eight feet is required, and to allow a zero foot, or excuse me, zero feet on the east property line where fifteen feet is required. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to legalize the current site conditions by means of this request and associated variances. The subject site fails to comply with Title nineteen, as evidenced by the request of the variances and the waivers within this project. Those being the principal, in the industrial zone, the principal structure must provide a fifty-foot setback from residential property where they abut each other. And in this case, this picture here that you're seeing delineates that. What appears to be property for the industrial site is actually located on the residential site. If we could go back one more slide. The wall you see there is actually located on the residence estates to the east, to the north. And the actual property line is somewhere in the middle of the asphalt, and therefore, the requirement is not met. Also, in addition, there's a requirement for a block wall to screen those two properties. Once again, the block wall, as pictured, is located well within the property of the residential estate and not at the perimeter of the industrial zone property. There's also additional waivers regarding chain-link fencing, perimeter landscaping. Staff is unable to support the variances as they, as they find them to be self-imposed hardships, nor can we support the waiver request, and staff is recommending denial of all the applications.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna abstain on these three items in as much as my, one of my business partners owns property adjacent to it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to hear from the applicant, please, and state your name and address.
Chairman Commissioners, David Turner with Bothman and Turner Engineering, representing the applicant, Mr. Jaime Lopez. I'll give you a little briefing on where this property is located. It's on Balsam Street, if you go to the overhead. It's on Balsam Street. It's directly adjacent to the northbound on-ramp coming off of Craig Road onto the ninety-five. Red Coach is the northernly street here. Craig Road is down here, just on the other side of this mini storage. Rainbow would be located over here. Our main access to the site really is Up Rainbow over Red Coach and then down to our site. As you can see, our site's kinda tucked back into this cul-de-sac. So really, the only people that come down this street this far are either people going to our property or else to the adjacent industrial properties. Zoning designations, the adjacent properties to the north of us are currently zoned residential, but their master planned office. That's, it's a county island just to the north of us here. The two neighbors directly to the north of us, I believe, are in support of this application. I don't think there's any issues there. As staff mentioned, our, our property line runs directly down here. This is an existing block wall adjacent to this residential structure to the north of us there. It's roughly fifty-two feet from our property line over to that block wall. This is all pavement in here. We have a, currently have a chain-link fence that runs along our property. It's a seven-foot high-chain-link fence with green, green meshing. Mr. Lopez purchased this property in June of two thousand and twelve. The property is currently zoned industrial, and Mr. Lopez has a small concrete finishing company that he would like to locate at this site. He basically, back in October, received permission for a business license at this location. And it was shortly after that that the issue with regards to the conversion being illegal came up. Mr. Lopez has spent literally tens of thousands of dollars putting furniture in this building, computers and, and whatnot, based on the fact that he thought he had a legal lot here. The structure had already been converted to an office. If you look at the floor plan here, as you come in the entry, there's a reception area. There was an office here, here, here. There's a plans room area back here. The kitchen had, all the appliances had been- The kitchen had, all the appliances had been removed so that it is currently, functions as an office kitchen. And then there's a conference room in here. So he, when he purchased this property, he was under the assumption that he had purchased a site that was legal. With that being said, I'll run through some of the items for this application. The first item is to allow 14-foot setback where a 50-foot setback is required. Literally, we just can't comply with that. Our, our structure is 14 feet over. The existing residence to the north of us, though, is roughly, I want to say, 85 feet to the north of us there. And there is a block wall that separates our property from his actual yard. Previously, in an application back in '08, a 10-foot separation, a 10-foot setback was approved with that application. All right, variance number two is to allow no wall where a six-foot screen wall is required. There is an existing seven-foot-high chain link fence with mesh screening along the north property line. That fence is pretty new. It's, I think it was constructed, it must have been within the last several years, I'm guessing. And it's in pretty good shape, and we feel that there shouldn't be a block wall needed at that, at this point. If we put a block wall on our property line in this section here, you're going to have a wall here and a wall here with just some pavement in between it, so we feel this will open that up a little bit. The other portion of that variance is to allow outdoor storage within the setback areas. If our setback is reduced, then it shouldn't be a problem for us. If we try to maintain a 50-foot setback and have the storage within that setback area, if you maintain 50 feet here and 10 foot from the adjacent property to the south, you've literally got a 25-foot strip of land in the center of your property that you could store things on. So we ask for a variance for that as well. We're asking for a seven-foot chain link fence, which, like I mentioned, is existing As far as the SDR is concerned, and like I mentioned, Mr. Lopez thought he had a legal conversion for this property when he purchased it. That's what his assumption was, and he actually got a business license to operate out of this location. We are asking for some waivers of the landscape requirements. We ask for the waiver of the Northerly property line, eight feet. This 14 feet from his structure over to the property line, that's his access back to his yard there. If he puts that landscaping in there, he has no access to his rear yard there. There is currently landscaping and a planter along the front here, a planter along the front here. There's a planter out in the front area here, and there's also plantings along the front near the entrance. We will be installing a planter in the back here and adjacent to these park installs in the rear as well, as well as putting a two-and-a-half-foot landscape strip along the Southerly property line. There's currently, along this section here, there is a carport, or actually, it's a, I guess it's a porch, really. So it's all concrete right now. All we have is two-and-a-half feet to plant in that section, so we will be planting that area to help buffer a little bit. At this time, we'd like to waive the landscape requirements adjacent to the right-of-way. We are going to be asking for a waiver of the off-site improvements with this application. This is mid-block improvements here. It would be very difficult to try to construct curb, gutter, and sidewalk in this section with all this pavement installed out here. We would ask that you waive that for the time being. We have no problem signing deed restrictions for future improvements there. And in conjunction with that, we would also sign deed restrictions to go ahead and put that landscaping in at the time we put those off-site improvements in as well. I had this item held at your last meeting so I could meet with Councilman Anthony. We went over this application in detail, and I think he has our full support. We have his full support, including the off-site waiver, and we ask that you approve this application as well.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I'll now open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this? Sir, state your name and address, please.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. There's two concerns. The applicant says that he, that the residential was okay with this. Is that correct?
You can answer that one, Mr. Turner.
Do we, that, I'll just say, I think that that's important, that the residents are on board with that. The second thing is that we used to have some double walls that had these little, you know, what, two or three feet between them, and they used to catch all kinds of debris in there, and they were nightmares. So I don't think that we ought to have any double walls there. If that, maybe he could get together with the abutting property owner on the residential side, side and raise that wall up or whatever, but there shouldn't be a double wall. And Commissioner Goines, the presenter here, the agent, it's Bachman-Turner, overdrive, let's smoke it in the boys' room.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst the Commission. If nobody minds, I'll start. I've been, I've been down there to look at this property, and I'm okay with what the applicant is asking for. Basically, as you can see from the diagrams and the overhead, the aerials, it's kind of tucked in in a corner of the freeway there, and is, as far as trying to do something with it, south of him is another concrete contractor. Little further south is a mini-storage. So this, it's really, the only, I'm losing my voice tonight, excuse me, but the only folks that are traveling that far down Balsam are the folks that are going either to the applicant's property or to the contractor south of him, and I'm not even sure if there's access to the mini-storage, and that's all there really is. The really turning thing for me is that the RE property to the north, he has taken his property line, and he's actually moved it about 30 or 40 feet to the north and built a block wall there. And presently, that residence to the north of the applicant is storing semi-trailers on that property. And so my understanding, Mr. Turner, is he does not have any objection to this application. Is that a correct statement?
I believe that's correct. Yes, we have spoke with him, and he, he has no objection to it.
And then I also agree with Mr. Farlow. It doesn't make sense to double-wall this and everything. So with that said, I'm in full support of this application. Anybody else? Mr. Sloman?
Is Mr. Jaime Lopez the same as James Lopez?
No, it's actually Jaime Lopez.
Jaime Lopez?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Sloman. Commissioner Bonnar?
I just, I just need you to point out which properties have agreed with your, with your application, if you could point to those. And is that 50-foot strip or whatever paved area one of them?
That's correct. Yeah, where that paving's at, that strip. Yeah, this property owner here, we've, we've spoke with him, and this gentleman here who owns this piece here, and this, this property line goes actually all the way back around to join our property there.
Okay, so the 50-foot pavement is also in agreement?
The one with the 50-foot pavement?
That one, that one.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I could, Lucian Piat Public Works?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
In this request, they requested to waive the off-site improvements, but they never submitted an application for a variance to remove the requirement for off-site improvements.
I believe I heard the applicant say they was willing to sign deed restrictions. Is that the kind of thing you're looking for?
Well, I don't think that our body can require a deed restriction, but I think we can require it as a condition that should the offsites, you know, should Balsam Street have to be finished, that you would commit to doing your portion of the offsites. Mr. Gerbic, does that, does that comport with what we can do?
I believe we can do that. The problem is going to be enforcement. You know, if he's still the owner of the property, if he's transferred it, and whether it's noticed to a subsequent property owner, these are very difficult conditions to enforce without putting a certain timeline on them.
What would you recommend?
Well, I would just say, if you want the street done, I would either ask for it right now or let it go, because I don't think you'll get it in the future, to be perfectly honest with you. See if Flynn has any input on that one.
Just to confirm with the city attorney, if you do have that as a condition of approval, I would agree that there needs to be a date certain that those street improvements need to be completed, because you need to have a timeframe for those things to be done. While we do record the conditions of approval with the county so that they are a document that you can search and a future property owner would find, I think, again, if the intent is to defer the street improvements, you need to do that to a date certain and condition it as such.
And at that particular point in time to join in, if you pick a date certain, if it turns out that that date is too soon, you can always give more time and pick another date certain.
That's what I was going to ask. Could we just do this as a review, in two years possibly, maybe three, to see on that? And that might be the solution to the problem. Director?
Yeah, I would recommend that what you do is you condition this approval to have the street improvements in place in two years, and then also a required review in two years to make sure that they are done.
Chairman, excuse me. Well, I think what we're asking here is have them waived temporarily and have them reviewed in three years. If you feel that in three years that we need to put those improvements in, then at that point in time, we would agree to it. But what we're asking for here is that we not put the improvements in with this application.
Just to, again, reinforce, as Mr. Pate has said, if they are waiving the street requirements, the off-street improvements, that needs to be a separate application. If they are deferring them, again, we need to defer them to a date certain.
And, Mr. Chairman, I can have a condition, if you'd like, and we can set it to the certificate of occupancy of the site. That would be the timeframe that I would suggest, tying the covenant to be recorded prior to the occupancy of the site. So I can, I can read in a condition if best the desire of the Commission.
In our, excuse me, in our initial application, if you look at the justification letter, we did mention waiving the off-site improvements.
Mr. Turner, right now, the, what they're telling you is, for you to get a waiver of that, you would have had to bring that as part of your application. What we're doing right now is looking at how to defer this to see whether or not Balsam Drive is going to ever get completed in that regard.
Got you.
And so I'm going to throw this back on to Mr. Gerbic. Is there a, I think we could have a two-year review maybe to see if Balsam is progressing to the point where they need to do the offsites. Would that work, and would we be able to enforce it? You know, let's say, two years from now, they haven't done it, but Balsam is now getting to the point where it's, where it needs to be done. Can we force them to do it at that juncture on the two-year review?
I, I think the cleaner way is to say you want it done in two years, and if two years during the review, it turns out you don't need it done, you can give them two more years or any more years. But I think you need to have it set right now that it needs to be done in two years.
That makes sense, clearly. At this juncture, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, on item, well, this new proposed condition, which item is that going to be with?
That would be on item number 24, which is the site development plan review application.
On item 22, I'll move for approval of abeyance, VAR 48827, subject to staff recommendations and conditions.
Motion carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Trusdale.
Item 23, abeyance, VAR 48828, move for approval, subject to staff recommendations and conditions.
Please post. Motion carries, again, noting the abstention of Commissioner Trusdale.
Item 24, move for approval of abeyance, SDR 48826, with an added condition that will read, "Street improvements must be in place within two years from, well, within two years, and a review of that will be done in two years." Is that?
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, we have condition 13, which requires the off-site improvements. If we could just modify condition 13?
Certainly, that makes sense.
That would be, and just modify the end to say, "Meeting currency standards on a, in two years from the date of this approval." So I can read, I'll read the whole thing as, "Construct all incomplete half-street improvements adjacent to the site, and remove all existing substandard street improvements and unused driveway cuts adjacent to the site, and replace with new improvements meeting current city standards." Two years in approval, or two years from the date of this approval.
And that would still allow them to come in and say, "Look, it's not happening on Balsam Street yet," and extend the time?
That would be a separate condition, I think, for the review of condition.
Actually, correct. What would happen is that they would do a review of condition if they are not able to build the street within two years. Under that review of condition application, they would request to extend that for additional time period.
Mr. Flag, I was wondering, now, we can still get a certificate of occupancy for the site, based on that?
Yes, you'll still be able to get a certificate of occupancy for the site.
Okay, prior to putting those improvements in. Right, okay, thank you.
So I'll withdraw my new condition, and we'll amend condition number 13 under Public Works as read into the record by Public Works.
Please post. Motion carries, again, noting the abstention of Commissioner Trusdale.
Mr. Chair, these items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Okay, we're going to move on now to item number 28. And again, I'm going to have to abstain because my law firm has represented the applicant Imagine Schools. Mr. Goines, I'm going to have to call upon you again.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item in as much as I represent the property owner and other parcel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 28, abeyance, SUP 48849, special use permit, public hearing. Applicant, Imagine Schools at East Mesa. Owner is the Voss Family Trust. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a private school primary with a waiver to allow no pickup and no drop-off area where one is required at 1951 South Rainbow, Ward 1, Tarkanian. Staff?
Commissioner, this is a request for a private school primary use to be located within an existing 11,628-square-foot building currently being used as a childcare facility. The subject site provides no pickup and drop-off area on-site. This proposal is inadequate because it will create an unsafe environment for children in the parking lot and may create traffic issues along El Parquet Avenue and Rainbow Boulevard due to vehicle stacking in the public rightsway. Without an adequate pickup and drop-off area, staff recommends denial of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Applicant?
Good evening. Lucy Stewart, 3900 Meadows Lane.
Ted Egerton, 6345 South Jones Boulevard.
And this is the overflow site for an existing charter school in Clark County at Buffalo and Rochelle. This location and the one at Buffalo and Rochelle is really considered, this is a request for a temporary site. What is hoping to occur is within the next two years, a site will be acquired for the main campus. Both campuses would be combined, and then hopefully, somewhere in the city of Las Vegas. So we're, we're just asking for this for just a couple of years for right now. And as staff indicated, there are some issues with this property. The main one being, there's no on-site pickup or drop-off, so the cars can't come and just drop their kids off and then drive off. Which I understand, that's a big concern. That would be a concern for the parents' safety and the children's safety, and that's pretty much one of our main concerns, is the safety of the students and the families of the students. In a minute, Mr. Egerton's going to sort of explain what we think is a viable solution to that issue. But one of the things that we did do that we hope helps to address the concerns of staff was that, one of the concerns that the traffic department was concerned about was little kids, kindergarten, first grade, that it's sort of like herding cats. They don't really, really know how to get seatbelts on and off quickly, and moms always have to help them in and out of cars. And so that was a concern, that that just adds more time to the pickup or the drop-off for the children. So the school has decided to switch and put the smaller, younger children at the established campus at Buffalo and Rochelle, and put the older kids, the older grades, at this location, with the assumption that they can get in and out of cars much more quickly than the smaller children. At your last meeting- At your last meeting, we did hold this item so we could have a neighborhood meeting, we paid the fee and had staff send the notices out, so we held it last week. We had one neighbor attend, and we spent a considerable, considerable amount of time with her to discuss her concerns and issues, and I think we've addressed them, and some of them being the older children, I think that helped us sway some of her concerns, and then some of the solutions we've come up with for the pickup and the drop-off of the children. So, the, the real concern, I guess, here is that this, well, I guess, the six, the good thing is, we've had a very successful school down at Buffalo and Rochelle. It's a charter school, so it's an alternative for parents in the Clark County School District to take their children at no additional tuition to them. So, and it's been very successful, and we have a waiting list, and that's why we've looked at an alternative, an additional campus, so then, until we can build, or acquire and build the main campus. So that's a great problem to have, but of course, then it is a problem, because right now, the school year starts in August, because we did hold for our neighborhood meeting, this pushes us into July for city council. So there are some minor changes that need to be adjusted, some tenant improvements, the toilet size, because these are the older children, the, the toilet heights and sinks have to be raised. So that's why, you know, I hope, as evidenced by us holding this and trying to come up with some creative solutions, that it does show that the applicant is willing to work with the city in almost any way possible to try and make this work, and try to make the city happy, the parents happy, and the students happy. And I'll turn it over to Ted to sort of explain the pickup and the drop-off.
Can I say before he starts, the, the old St. Joseph's School site?
As you can see by the site plan.
This site is actually pretty challenging from a, from a pickup and drop-off area. What we've laid out here is the diagram, which shows how many vehicles can actually fit onto the parking lot for a queue for pickup and drop-off time periods. As you can see, we have, we've shown 10 vehicles on there. For our calculations, what we estimated was eight vehicle queues on-site, in other words, two rows of four. Based upon the calculations of the capacity of 270 students, we're anticipating in the morning approximately 50 cars per session, per bell time, to arrive at the school, and we're anticipating in the afternoon approximately 36 vehicles to arrive each bell time during the afternoon release time. In order to get the traffic out of the existing neighborhoods and off the streets because of the lack of the drop-off and pickup area, we've actually entered into an LOI with an existing mosque at the intersection of Oke and Rosanna. Our proposed plan is to actually stage the parents out on the mosque site, and then via student, or via radios with staff, between the staff on-site and staff at the existing staging area, or proposed staging area, we'd actually have them in queues go down along Oke, down onto El Parquet, into the daycare, and then back out onto El Parquet and exit onto Rainbow. With this staging area, what we're anticipating is keeping the vehicles out of the existing neighborhoods, number one, and number two, with having an actual traffic control officer at the staging area, we can actually control the flows onto the site, and therefore executing the parking lot as intended with eight vehicles per time. We believe with that in mind, we can successfully control the parents during the drop-off and pickup times of the school. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Tiffany Curtis, 7885 West Rochelle Avenue, 89147. I am the founding principal of Imagine School at Mountain View. I wanted to note that we are a public school of choice. We started in 2011 with only 156 students. Next year, we have 556 students registered for our school, and we do have a waiting list at three grade levels. We have parents here tonight and students who can speak about the carpool situation, our program that we run right now at our Rochelle site, that includes our entire human asset team being outside during drop-off and pickup. We use walkie-talkies, we communicate with the entire staff, we wear yellow or orange safety vests, and we've run a very successful program. Our, our third and fourth grade students who will go over to this overflow site are students who, the majority of them have been at our school site since we started in 2011. Our, school is a school of choice, so our parents commit to a longer school day, a longer school year. We have 184 days in our school year, as compared to Clark County that has 180. Our parents commit to mandatory parent volunteer hours. We have an amazing PTO that supports our, our academics and our school growth. So I support the second location as it answers the needs of our community in terms of giving our parents an opportunity for family choice.
We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this point.
Does anybody else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll look, are they going to speak?
Yes.
I'll reopen the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak, please come down at this time. We have three microphones, so we can accommodate everybody at, at one request. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ilona Robertson, 6059 Journey Zen Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89148. I am a parent, I'm new to Imagine this year, and it is an amazing school. One of the things that we do very well is carpool. I sit and watch every day, and the cars pull up, the teachers call the names, and the kid, the lanes that the kids go in, the kids jump in the car, and it, it moves very fast. And I have never had any problems with carpool if, so I just, I, seeing how big the parking lot is and seeing the plan, I think that it won't be an issue, and I'm, I'm happy with the school, and that's, that's it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dominique Jackson, 4663 Sweet Marissa Court, 89139. I also have students who attend the original location at Buffalo and Rochelle, and I am also the president of the parent-teacher organization at the school. I echo Ms. Robertson's comments that we have an excellent school, an excellent school community, and we have done everything possible to adhere and to cooperate with the current carpool, carpool system. I'm confident that the same would happen at the next location. And I think, as parents of choice, we're willing to cooperate and do anything that the school asks of us. I echo the comments again, that based on the plan, we, as parents, feel willing to cooperate and have the least impact on traffic in that area.
Thank you. And who's the little one with you? She want to say hello?
This is my daughter, Jayden.
Jayden, say hello.
She is a student at Imagine, you want to say hello?
Hi.
Hi. You want to have your young one say hello?
Uh...
Go ahead, say hi.
Hi.
Your name?
Ava.
Thank you, Ava. Sir?
Good evening, my name is DeMarlo Green, I'll stay at 2715 Clayton Street, North Las Vegas, Nevada, 89032. I am one of the parents that take a 30-minute trip every day to the school. I can't speak of how highly these kids are learning, becoming young individuals already at this age. I am extremely pleased, I myself, and willing to do anything that I can to get this, get this accomplished for both resident sides of this, for this elementary school. As they stated, it is of choice, as I stated, I come 30 minutes every day. My son is, in my opinion, off the charts compared in his learning abilities. They are creating something that a lot of schools in Las Vegas do not have. And as I state, I'm in a community where he can go to a separate school. I choose to take that trip every day. We're also a part of that PTO. I, I just can't speak of how highly I would like to see this done for our kids, to keep their education continue, and to give other parents the opportunity to put their kids in our school, and bring them that far, wherever they would like to go, at no tuition whatsoever. So I'm just praying on them, honestly.
Thank you. Do you want to tell your, your name, young man?
Dana Green.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Next?
Jennifer Drummond, 6345 Hobart Avenue, 89107. I'm another parent who drives over 30 minutes to bring my son to school. He started last year as a kindergartner, he's there as a first grader this year. I was the PTO president last year, I have stepped down to be vice president. My son can actually walk two minutes to a public school, I choose to drive a half an hour. The carpool system that they actually implemented within a two-day period has gone great. I mean, we can get rid of our 300-plus students in less than 15 minutes, in and out, with no problems. My son is at a second to third grade level, in first grade, so I just think that the, the teachers and the staff are great, they're happy to help us whenever we can, and we just want to see it go further.
Thank you. Do you want to say your name? Should I say, Mr. Vice President?
David Drummond.
Thank you, Mr. Drummond, great job. That concludes our public hearing. Seeing no one, did you want to say anything, Ms. Stewart?
If I could just make one quick clarification and put on the record, I don't think we mentioned that there is a before-school program, too, and an after-school, like the safe key from, like, the Clark County School District, so not everybody arrives at the same time and not everybody leaves at the same time. And I just want to make sure it's clear that when the cars pull up, when they've been sent, when, this is how it will operate, when the cars will be sent over by the safety monitor from the mosque site, that's, they, the, the safety monitor will say, "Send out, you know, the kids," and say the kids' names, and they'll be out there, but they're escorted out, they're never just sent out to the car. So they're escorted out, and the doors opened, and they're helped into the car by one of the staff members. So I just don't want you to think they're just running out and running amok.
Okay, thank you.
I just have two questions, Lucy, before we discuss it. How long has the, the school at Buffalo and Rochelle been there?
Since 2011?
2011, so that's two years. And so now, you're starting to look for a space for that school now?
Right, for the main campus, because they've just outgrown that side.
So you're not going to combine these two campuses?
Oh, no, they will be combined. That's why we're asking for this for about two years, we think it, we hope, that it'll take that long to find a site, if we have to build a site, but I think you gave us a great suggestion, so we can look at that, too, and see if that's a possibility.
Yeah, and then, second of all, we asked to have put on the record today a letter from the mosque people for the record stating that we could use that parking lot, and that parking lot was going to be, if you could give that to the clerk or to someone, I'd like that to be put on the record today. And if I'd, could we pass that down? I'd like to see that, please.
Is that it?
No.
Well, seeing none, I'll, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll refer to the board for questions and comments. Commissioner Bonar?
Yes, it's not so much a question, but a, but a statement. I've attended a couple of meetings that, that were held, and I've, I've had my, well, suggestions, and actually I had some doubts, and it did absolutely depend on having a staging area that was off-site. If that's been fully arranged, wonderful, but also the pathway from the, from the staging area around Oak, down Oke and down Rainbow, fortunately are all right turns, and are about as safe as you can get, but the flow must be metered in a way that it never backs up onto Rainbow, and there will not be a dedicated lane on Rainbow for your parents that are in queue. So, as, I think we need a review period that this is really operational, and it's, it's actually, it's tight, but if you lose the, the mosque's permission, and if you don't queue properly in the flow, it will not work. Right now, it will work with those elements in place. Thank you.
Yes, through you. I had mixed emotions about this whenever I read it. I was against it at the beginning, then I seen your queuing plan, and then I had concerns that you're going to call five to eight vehicles over from the queuing lot up to, up to the school, and what happens when parents and, come to pick up their kids, and they don't go through the, through the, the staging area? And Lucy sent me an email back stating that this is an application school, or, and there's certain privileges to attend in this school, and the parents are held to a higher standard than whether it was a, just a general public facility, so. One of the things that they said that they were going to do, if you show up and your number wasn't on the queue, that they would send you back to the back of the queue and not allow you to get your kid at that time. And I agree with Commissioner Bonar that a review period is necessary. This is kind of a difficult one to assess, how long of a review period's appropriate? You know, if we say a one-year review, and this goes haywire within the first couple of months, we're putting a lot of kids at risk. So, a shorter review period, and I'll let somebody else, Vicki, draft that, but maybe where you can come back to us and we could try implementing better, a better procedure, if it seems to be putting the kids at risk.
Commissioner, we, we were all, Commissioner Bonar and myself, and all of us were at all of the meetings, and it was definitely conclusive and agreed upon that it was three months. I mean, it was going to be from the day school started for, I mean, 90 days, and that was it, I mean, if, and now, I don't know how we're going to review it, because, you know, we need to send somebody out from, from, not that we don't take your word for it, but we don't, I mean, what we do, you know what I mean? I mean, we have to...
I don't take it personally.
You know what I mean? We have to send somebody from Lucian's department, or from someone's department, you know, you know, spot checks or erratic checks, and I don't know how all that stuff works, because this is something new, but as new as it is, it's very, very important that once a week for 90 days, somebody goes out there and checks at the 7:30, or the 7:40, or the 7:50, and, and how that is stated would be up, I guess, to the city attorney, because he's the one that manages, you know, the time of the people that he's accessing to do their jobs, but don't you agree, sir?
Again, I think, just like everything else, it's how you measure it. If you're going to have a three-month review, how are you going to know it's working? What are you going to base the complaints upon? If it's going to be citizen-driven, that's one thing. If you want staff to make spot checks, we'll certainly make staff available to, to do that through either code enforcement or some other branch, but if we wouldn't be able to be out there every day checking this thing for three months, we have to do, you know, sporadic checks, unless you want it to be citizen complaint-driven.
No, I, I, I prefer spot checks from the city of Las Vegas, I mean, personally. Is that what you said?
We could certainly make code enforcement that enforces a lot of our conditions and stuff like that, aware of this particular condition, and see if they can go out there, you know, at least once a week or something for the first couple of months, or every other week at least, and do some random checks on it, report back.
You know, and, and if we could collect their spot checks as well and compare them to our spot checks, I just think it's that important. I mean, I, you know, I am all in favor of, of new private schools, I'm all in favor of this working. I'm, what I'm astounded at is that there's not one parent here, because if this was my neighborhood, I guarantee you, I'd have 20 people here. I'm, I'm astounded that nobody's here, and that's a plus for you, Lucy, because if I'd have seen 20 people, I'd have said, "Oh, well, you're shot down, bye-bye, goodnight." But it's not here, they're not here, and only one came to your meeting, so, and I think that woman was very vocal, I think she went back to your neighborhoods, and so, I'm going to, I'm going to let, you know, Byron make the motion and, and, and draft it along with the city attorney, but I, I do want it known that the councilwoman wants the review brought to city council, not to, not to, not to planning sheet, because it has to go to planning right next before this goes on. Yeah, she want, this has, this goes to planning, and then, and then the, then whatever the review is, the review would also go to planning.
Yep. I, I think the, the director will address that, but I'll take your comments in, but because I am acting in the capacity of chairman on this item, I will not be able to make the motion, but I do want to make a couple of comments before I ask for a motion. I, I thought this was going to be a nightmare, I, my point is, I, I... My point is, I think it still is. And I'll tell you why. And it has nothing to do with the school and what you do. I'm the namesake of a school. My parents have a school named after them. And so I know both sides of the fence. I have my kids in a private school. So I drive, I make that half-hour, 45-minute sacrifice for quality of education every day. But I do think, in this case, to me, what is paramount is the pickup and the safety of these kids being picked up and dropped off every day. And I think when you begin to separate, for lack of a better word, we're separating this campus for a temporary use for a couple of years, but I look at it from a safety standpoint. We're going to be queuing and flagging. We're going to be exiting out onto Rainbow, which is a busy street. We're going to go into a parking lot, which is used for parking, but now we're going to go against the ingress and egress and use it as a queuing station. Folks have to come out and make a decision whether to go east back down to El Parquet to Rainbow. If they get confused, they're going to have to go all the way up west through a neighborhood and make a turnaround in a cul-de-sac and come back down. And so I just believe, it sounds great now, but when the weather changes and it's dark at 4:30 in the afternoon and we're picking kids up and we're going, we don't know where, and we're flagging and queuing, I just think it's a disaster for safety. And if I were paying this type of money, the same campus that I drive on to drop my kid off is the same campus I want to come on to pick my kid up. So those are just my comments. But I'll entertain a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Slott?
Yes, in reference to item number 28 SUP 48849, I would make a motion for approval with the added condition of a three-month review from the date of opening. Somebody will have to help me with the date that that would appear back before us.
Mr. Chair, if I might just step in and suggest that we have a required review at a public hearing before the city council, at the second city council meeting in November. I believe that date is November the 20th. Does the city clerk could just verify that for me? And the purpose of waiting until that date is you need to have at least 30 days of operation for the parents to learn the system. And then after that, in points, point in time, staff needs to be able to go out there and verify the situation and then schedule the item for city council. So again, I would recommend that the required review at city council be at the second meeting in November.
And we accept that.
I need a motion?
Item number 28 SUP 48849, make a motion for approval with the review at the second city council meeting in November.
Okay. Director Flynn, was that a, was that a new motion that was added to that?
No, that is an added condition to the special use permit.
Added condition, very good. Motion for approval with an added condition, please cast your vote. Post. And that motion has passed with both Commissioner Flegas and Truesdale abstaining.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And, Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward to the July 24th city council meeting.
Saint Joseph's, Lucy.
Now, I'll turn this back over to Commissioner Flegas on item 29.
Thank you, Commissioner Goines. Moving on to item number 29 is a bans re-notification, SDR 48456. The applicant is Las Vegas Valley Water District owner, USA, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review to install 28 16-foot-tall solar panel arrays and 130-foot weather tower at 7210 Shamba Road in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. The staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abeyance to allow the applicant to revise the plans. The applicant has done so. Staff finds that the new plans will have an manageable visual and audible impact and will provide an alternative means of meeting the high-energy demands of water conveyance without depending on emission-intensive power sources such as coal or natural gas. Staff supports this request as it meets the stated goals of the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan and recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please? If you could state your name and address, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners Neil Tomlinson, 3883 Howard Hughes Parkway, Suite 1100, here for the applicant. Also with me is Gary Wood, who is the renewable energy engineer, and also Bronson Mack, who's a public outreach. As stated, we did listen to the concerns that were raised at the previous hearing. The applicant did hold another neighborhood meeting. So they held a total, actually, of two neighborhood meetings, and then they also had a community event at Nickrbocker Park. As staff stated, the plan has been revised. There was a reduction from a maximum of 27 feet to a maximum of 16 feet high for the solar panel arrays. As the application states, 16 is going to be the max. There's actually, in most cases, it's going to be lower than 16 because of slight elevation changes on the site. So 16 feet is the max down from the 27 feet. Certainly available to answer any questions you may have, and we thank you for your support today.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. Now, I'll open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and open it up for questions amongst the commission. Commissioner Truesdale?
Mr. Tomlinson, I want to thank you for bringing something back that I think, obviously, the neighbors are much less upset because they're not here. But also, you listened to the commission with regards to making this compatible with the area and the neighborhood. And the 16-foot height, for the most part, is only going to be visible if people are looking down into it rather than it coming up to them. So would you be willing to, you know, whatever motion we make here, agree to a condition that if this was to be changed, you'd come back to the planning commission for a public hearing?
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Bonar?
Yeah, as I recall, this was going to be a test site for different technologies that are solar. Has that changed?
No, that has not changed. It's, this is a cooperative effort with Sandia National Labs and UNLV. The solar energy that's generated on this site will actually be used at the site, and excess energy will go into the grid. So that is still the plan.
I think you missed the question. Is your site going to be filled up with one technology or are you leaving room for three or four different technologies?
Thank you for clarifying. Yes, actually, it's going to be up to eight different companies that may come in, so there will be different technologies that will be included on the site.
So does your commitment of 16 feet of height apply to whoever else comes in?
Yes, it will.
Okay. How does?
But what we've done is, we've, in an attempt to accommodate all the concerns, any developers who wish to have a height that's over 16, we're going to try to relocate that to a different site where there would not be an impact.
All right.
Mr. Chair, if I might just jump in to clarify this matter on any differences to the site plan, just so the applicant is clear and members of the public are clear as well. If there are any significant deviations from the site plan as submitted and presumably approved, they would need to come back in with a new site plan to us. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. What is being shown here is the solar field in the area as shown on the site plan on my screen to the height limit that has been indicated in the public hearing notices and is indicated on the drawings. And so development on the site needs to be in conformance with the approved site plan. Anything different than that would need to come back.
Thank you, Director. Does anybody else wish to be heard on the commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of this item, subject to all staff's conditions, subject to the 16-foot height restriction that the applicant has represented, and additionally that the director's comments and the applicant's agreement, that any change would come back to a public hearing that would affect this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Okay, at this juncture, we're going to take a short break, so we'll be in recess. Thank you.[1245.16]
[inaudible]
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 Okay, we'll get started again. We're going to start now with the items 30, 31, and 32, which are all three related items, beginning with item 30. ZON 49179. The applicant is Boulder Placement Systems, Inc. The owner is Jada Holdings, LLC. For possible action on a request for rezoning from C2 General Commercial and CM Commercial Industrial to CM Commercial Industrial at 2049 and 2101 West Bonanza Road in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Item 31, which is related, VAR 49180. The applicant is the same. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow outdoor storage within the east, west, and south required setback in landscape buffer areas where such is not allowed. Staff is recommending approval. The final related item, 32, is SDR 49181. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for expansion of an existing building and landscape material slash lumberyard with waivers of perimeter landscape buffer standards to allow zero-foot buffers along the east and west property lines where eight feet is required, and a zero-foot landscape buffer along the south property line and a portion of the north property line where 15 feet is required. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject property consists of two parcels found between the US-95 and Bonanza Road on which an existing building and landscape material lumberyard and garden supply is located. The western parcel is multi-zoned, C2 General Commercial and CM Commercial Industrial, while the eastern parcel is zoned CM. The applicant is requesting to rezone the entire site to CM in order to bring the project under a single zoning district. The rezoning is appropriate as the use has been established on both parcels for several years, and the action would not affect current and future uses on adjacent properties. As the subject property is located in an established light industrial area and its rear property line abuts a freeway, staff recommends approval of the variance to allow outdoor storage within the setback and landscape buffer areas, and the site development plan review requests subjected conditions of approval that will allow for conformance with city codes. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant, please, and if you'll state your name and address.
I apologize, I'm going to have to get you a little bit closer to the mic, or... I'm Patty Belova, Belova Engineering.
I apologize, I'm going to have to get you a little bit closer to the mic, or...
I'm Patty Belova, Belova Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Boulder Placement. This business has been in... This operator has been in business for many years, operating on these two parcels, and he's the actual owner of the property and, at the same time, owner of the business. The reason for our application was to bring into conformance the zoning of those two parcels, which was split zone between C2 and CM, and the proposed zoning is, of course, CM. That will allow him to continue operating as a landscaping supply company. At this point, we're not proposing any changes to the layout, any construction, or alteration of the existing building or layout. We agree with staff conditions, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard? Sir, your name and address?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 18th Street. On item number 32, the only thing I'm worried about, it says that they're requesting a zero... In a way, they're requesting a variance or something on the north property line. That's along Bonanza, and that's what concerns me, because Ahearn has put in a lot of money, and they've made their site just look excellent down there, and I think that these people should do the same. So I don't know what they have in mind, but I hope it's nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion with the commission. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I've actually been by this, Mr. Farlow. They have a pretty attractive landscaping features along the front, and I think they're... If staff can correct me, they're short by a few feet, right? It's not that they don't have landscaping, it's just they don't meet the... After the road was widened and improvements were put in. This operation...
That is correct, yes. There's a dedication, I believe, of additional right-of-way. As you can see on the overhead, this is the landscaping that they have, which is quite... It almost meets code. They're just a few feet short along here, but they are well-planted.
And for this, for along Bonanza where this sits, this has always been a business that every time I've been by, there's been very well-maintained, unlike some of the other applications we've had along the corridor. So I will support the application.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion for approval carries.
Mr. Chairman, item 31, VAR 49180. Move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Please vote. Please post. Motion for approval carries.
Item 32, SDR 49181. Move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Please vote. Please post. Motion for approval carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, these items go forward to the July 24 City Council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Moving on to item number 33, which is VAR 49112. The applicant is Wilmington Residential, Nevada, Inc. The owner is Estancia Desert, LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 19-foot rear side... Excuse me, a 19-foot rear yard setback where 20 feet is required at 10310 Mount Oxford Avenue, Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report?
Mr. Chairman, no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented in that the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing to construct a residential dwelling that is bigger than the lot was designed to accommodate. Alternatively, a small residential dwelling would allow conformance to the Cliffs Edge Master Development Plan and Design Guile requirements, and view of the absence of any hardship, staff is recommending denial. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please, and sir, if you'll state your name and address?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Mark Faulkner. G.C. Wallace Companies, 1555 South Rainbow Boulevard, representing Wilmington Homes on this application. There's a little bit of history on this particular project. Wilmington Home is not the original developer on this. This was originally developed by Meritage Homes, and sent... And I believe they've recorded a map in 2006. Since that time and with the economy, Meritage Homes has dropped this parcel. Wilmington has come in and picked this parcel up, and this particular lot is the only lot on this in Unit 3 that we are having an issue with getting the... Making the home fit. So that's... That is a unique situation in my mind, and that's why we were asking for the setback to 19 feet. It's actually 19.22 feet where 20 is required. It's a corner lot, and we do have... The Providence Design Review Committee has looked at this, and we have received their approval, and I have a copy of that letter with me this evening. At this point, I will turn the... Turn it over to you for questions.
Thank you. Now open this matter up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think he's made his... Made his point, and I'll support the request. I'll move for approval of VAR 49112, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Please vote. Please post. Motion for approval carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Item number 36, VAR 49162. Applicant owner is Johnny M. and Rachel E. Del Toro for possible action on a request for a variance to allow an existing four-foot solid block wall in the front yard where a maximum of five feet with two feet solid is allowed at 5617 Island Breeze Drive, Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, can we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the wall was constructed approximately two inches from the western property line without a building permit. It does not comply with the Title 19 height requirements. No evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances has been presented in that the applicant created a self-imposed hardship by constructing a block wall above the maximum height permitted by code. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of this application. If denied, the applicant would have to modify the existing wall to meet code. Please note that additional letters of support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant, if you could state your name and address, please? If we could hear from the applicant, if you could state your name and address, please?
Rachel Del Toro, 5617 Island Breeze Court, Las Vegas, 89130. The wall, yes, was built by my husband without a permit, but our neighbor, Jay, gave us a letter stating it's okay, that he doesn't mind the wall. In fact, he loves the wall being there. It's to protect our property from the sheddings from the tree in his yard. It's a huge, huge tree and it has like a lot...I mean, the sheddings doesn't get cleaned up properly, so that's why we put the wall up.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Chairman. I don't have any problem with this wall. It's nice-looking ones between the two houses, but whoever makes a motion, I would hope that they would add a timeline of 90 days to condition number two for the acquisition of building permits.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'll entertain a motion.
You know, we're in a catch-22, but I think it's...you know, how do you come out and construct a wall and not know you have to pull a permit and then say, "Well, my neighbor's okay with it and give it to me." So I...that's just my comment. I...I think you knew better. You just pushed one on on us, so I'm gonna leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, through you, on item 36, VAR 49162, I would make a motion for approval with the amended condition number two, whereas the applicant should contact the building department and acquire the proper permits within a 90-day period.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Ms. Del Toro, I need you to come up front, if you don't mind, and either agree or disagree with the amendment to the condition.
So the amendment is to...just to get the permit?
Yes.
The wall stays as is?
That's correct. You're gonna need to get a permit and then the amendment is that you need to contact the building department within 90 days.
Yes, that's fine. We'll get the permit.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Didn't you know you need a permit when you put up the wall in the first place?
My husband did it. The neighbors, everybody was talking how all their walls were put up and they said they didn't need a permit and so that's what he did. I apologize for that.
So you believe the neighbors and you don't say, "You know what? Let's check with the city."
It wasn't me.
Because the neighbors will tell you anything.
I know. He had a surgery and he can't really...no, it's okay.
Okay, the...while the discourse was going on, the results were posted and the motion for approval carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Moving along to items number 37 and 38, which are related, beginning with item number 37, VAR 49174, the applicant owner is EMA Holdings LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow two 2,600-square-foot spaces where a minimum of 4,000-square-foot space is required at 4221 Stewart Avenue, Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. The related item number 38, which is SDR 49173, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review to add two spaces to an existing 11-space mobile home park. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report?
Mr. Chairman, staff recommends approval of the site development plan review and the associated variance as the proposal conforms with the general plan and the requested lot sizes are consistent in size with the other 11 existing lot at least spaces at the site. Please note, we have received an additional protest since publication.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant, if you could state your name and address, please?
Good evening, Chair, Commission. James Grindstaff, 1317 Woodmore Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. Staff, thank you for the report. I appreciate that. The applicant has reviewed all the conditions and we accept the conditions as placed on the application. We respectfully request your approval and I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, sir. I'll open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Chair, through you. I really don't have an issue with this. Even with the addition of the two trailers, it doesn't exceed the 8.5 dwelling units per acre. It meets all the setbacks. It's just adding the two additional lots and this trailer park or mobile home park, whatever we're calling them, has been in existence since 1971 and so you'll see my support on this.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Chair, on item number 37, VAR 49174, would make a motion to follow staff's recommendation of approval with all conditions.
Please post. Motion for approval carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Sir, you still have one more to go.
Chairman, on item number 38, SDR 49173, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Please post. Motion for approval carries.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
And now you're finished. These items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Going on now to item number 39, which is VAR 49240, the applicant is D.R. Horton, owner is Palm Mortuary Inc. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a half-street construction of 16 feet of asphalt and a 14 feet of dirt roadside drainage swell with no curb, gutter, sidewalk, or streetlights where such are required on Maverick Street north of Rome Boulevard and west of Jones Boulevard at 6601 North Jones Boulevard, Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is applying to reinstate Maverick Street public right-of-way north of Rome Boulevard in order for the adjacent property owner on the west to install a street to service a seven-lot residential subdivision within Clark County. The applicant is requesting a variance so as not to install the proposed...not to install the street to Title 19 standards. This project will not have any benefit to the residents of the city of Las Vegas and will leave the city liable for the maintenance cost of the undeveloped portion of the right-of-way as proposed. Staff recommends denial of the application. Please note, we have received additional protests since publication.
Thank you. And if we could hear from the applicant, please, and state your name and address?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Chris Kemfer here on behalf of D.R. Horton. If I can...we can go to the overhead and I hope my head's not in the way of the overhead. When you read the staff report, you automatically say, "What the heck is going on?", but there is a story to be told here. As you can see, this is the property we're talking about here that has the red block on it. All of this property, north of Rome, is in a rural neighborhood preservation area. Now, while the county has what's called rural standards for streets, which is pavement usually 16 feet, 14 feet of compacted dirt with a swale, the city does not. And we can debate all day long whether or not the city should or should not have rural standards. But the bottom line is, if you're familiar with this area, especially this is the Gil Crease area in here, they do not like sidewalks, streetlights, and all of the other things that those of us who live in an urban area take for granted. Now, that being said, we also appreciate very much what staff is saying. And there's an old German saying that you don't have to hit a good mule twice. And so what we went and went back to the drawing board and what we are suggesting is that we put in what is shown along Rome here and that is this particular situation with street, paving, curb and gutter, and then this shows rock and then the fence. And where this would align would be immediately adjacent to the fence that's on Maverick. This is the Palm Mortuary fence here. So what we would do would then have the paving here, the curb and gutter, and then an area here that would be not dedicate...in fact, in talking to Public Works, I think their determination is that we would just dedicate 18 feet, 16 feet for paving, two feet for curb and gutter, and then the remainder of the property would be retained by the adjacent property owner, which would be Palm. So all we are trying to do is to make something work for the citizens out there and I think staff would agree that especially streetlights are not something that in this particular portion of the community would be well-received or would even be needed. So we would respectfully ask for your approval, subject to what staff had indicated, which is the 16 feet of paving and the two feet for the curb and gutter. Thank you. And Mr. Mike Cunningham here, the engineer, is available, should you have any questions appropriate for his consideration.
Thank you. We'll now open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion and open up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Mr. Chair, if I might just jump in briefly. Based on the testimony of the applicant here this evening in terms of providing a curb and gutter and I believe a sidewalk on the city of Las Vegas portion of Maverick there, we would need to amend our Public Works conditions and if I might just have Mr. Payet describe how we would need to revise those conditions.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, through you, and I just will say, we did kind of at the last minute agree to make these modifications that make them a little more acceptable to Public Works for what they're requesting. So essentially, all the Public Works conditions would be eliminated and we would have two new conditions. And as I understand, there will not be any sidewalk. The idea being that we want this as low maintenance as possible for the city and so we're just gonna require an 18-foot dedication and a construction of 16 feet of asphalt and two feet curb and gutter. And I can read the new conditions in. The first would be dedicate 18 feet of right-of-way for Maverick Street, including the appropriate area for a cul-de-sac terminus, meeting city standards prior to approval of construction drawings for non-standard improvements in the Maverick Street alignment adjacent to this site. And a second added condition would be construct 16 feet of asphalt along with curb and gutter per standard drawing number 216 on the city of Las Vegas side of Maverick Street concurrent with the development of residential lots along the Maverick Street alignment adjacent to Sessors Parcel Number APN 125-23-702-006. And if they can agree to those conditions, Public Works can approve of the request that they're asking for.
I'll go ahead and just ask you the question. Do you agree to those conditions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The way I understand, it's 18 feet of dedication, which is the 16 feet for the paving and the two feet for the curb and gutter, and then the rest would remain with the adjacent property owner, in this case Palm. Is that correct? Thank you.
Yes. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Chairman, through you. I'm a little confused because are you adding the sidewalk or not? I thought I heard the director say you're adding a sidewalk, but it looked like a gravel throughout where the sidewalk would be placed. What...which route are you building this?
Actually, based on our discussions, there would be no sidewalk.
Okay.
And if I can show you why, that's not...this is...let me get this. This is Rome down here. This is Palm Mortuary. It cul-de-sacs here. So we'd be talking about essentially putting a sidewalk along the Palm Mortuary that would essentially go nowhere. So we agree that rural standards is not something that you can accept and we accept that, but what we're asking then is that we just put the paving, the curb and gutter and then the rest is left to be maintained appropriately by the adjacent property owner.
I have no further questions.
Commissioner Balda?
You just added a phrase that confused me. Who's maintaining the improvements in the portion dedicated to the city?
That would be the city would maintain the street and the curb and gutter.
I thought the staff was trying to get away with no maintenance responsibility.
If I may through you, Mr. Chairman, just as low maintenance as possible.
Okay.
Which is just the curb, curb, gutter and asphalt.
Commissioner Truesdale?
If there are other questions, I would make a motion for approval, subject to all staff's conditions and the revised conditions of Public Works, which the applicant has agreed upon, for the 18-foot dedication.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion for approval carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will need to go forward to the July 24 City Council meeting. We would also request that the applicant submit a new site plan showing these modifications to us prior to going forward to City Council.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good night, everyone.
Item number 40, SUP 48930, the applicant is Delfino Gomez, owner Fong Family Trust et al. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a beer/wine/cooler on-sale establishment within an existing 4,980-foot square foot restaurant with a waiver to allow a 242-foot distance separation from a house of worship where 400 feet is required at 2021 East Charleston Boulevard in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval and staff, may we have the report, please?
Chairman, just disclosure, I live in a community which is within the notification area. However, I don't think I would be affected any greater or lesser than anyone else in the neighborhood and therefore will be voting on this matter.
Thank you. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff is supporting the waiver request as the uses are separated by 100-foot right-of-way, that being Charleston Boulevard. The proposed use can be conducted in a manner that is compatible and harmonious with the existing neighborhood and staff recommends approval of the use permit. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant and if you could state your name and address, please?
Delfino Gomez, 2021 East Charleston Boulevard, 89104.
Well, tell us what...about your project or...
Well, basically, you know, I'm here today just to try to get a permit for a beer and liquor...beer and wine and cooler license. Been trying and working this one. This is a family restaurant. We've been working really hard on this place in there and try to keep it that way, nice and clean. Like you can see, I've been having a really good, excellent record from the health department. That place, it was really...it was a really mess in there. We put it up, undated. We fixed a lot of things inside. It's been nice and clean. We try to keep it a family restaurant business. That's what we're trying to do in there.
Okay, thank you. And do you agree to the conditions?
Yes.
Okay, I'll open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Please state your name and address, please?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Where's this house of worship that we're talking about?
Staff will go ahead and if you want to answer.
There's a storefront church down there.
On the overhead, there are actually two... On the overhead, there are actually two storefront churches located across Charleston, just west of Crestwood. They're indicated on the map by a yellow dotted square.
I've said this time and time again that these storefront churches are going to come back and haunt us. And this is one of them that we're talking about right now.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Yeah, just beer and wine.
Are you going to eventually have liquor like the old Long Island iced teas and stuff?
I'm not planning to have any hard liquor in there.
Okay, because?
Just want to keep a family restaurant environment.
No margaritas or nothing?
We're probably going to work with wine margaritas.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing nobody else for public comment, I will close the public comment portion of the agenda on this item and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Yes, Chairman, through you. Sir, I applaud you. You're the first person in this neighborhood to bring something before this commission in six months without having sign spam all over your building, all over your windows and everything else. I do see a, I meant to drive by this property prior to the meeting. It just slipped my mind. But by the looks of it, you're taking care of this place. I do see condition number three says all temporary signs on site shall be permitted or removed within 30 days of final approval. I don't know if that's a standard. Looks like that's just a standard condition. So anyways, keep it up and.
We're going to have lunch there. We're going to come there.
Thank you. You're welcome to come and attend there.
And please don't start sign spamming outside of your building because it's a great looking building, one of the best looking on that little corner.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Chairman, on item number forty, SUP 48930, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommend, staff's recommendation for approval.
Please post. Motion for approval carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night, sir. Item number forty-one, SUP 49086. The applicant is Megan Kays. The owner is Douglas Kays. For possible action on a request for a special use permit to establish a 22,500-square-foot outdoor sales component, Farmer's Market, to an existing 125,750-square-foot swap meet indoor use at 1717 South Decatur Boulevard, Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to operate a Farmer's Market with a maximum of seventy-five, 10-foot by 10-foot individual retail units within the designated 150-foot by 150-foot swap meet at outdoor area located between the two driveways adjacent to the east side of Decatur Boulevard. Staff is recommending approval of this request as the proposed use is appropriate for the site and can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with surrounding uses. Staff does have one additional condition they would like to add at this time, and that being the sales of merchandise shall be limited in scope to that of seasonal produce, freshly baked goods, food items, and handmade arts and crafts.
Thank you. And if we could hear from the applicant, please, if you could state your names and addresses.
Megan Kays, 2025 Cedar Hill Street, 89128. And thank you, staff, for your report, and I accept all the conditions.
Thank you. Sir?
Doug Kays, 614 Cortez Campanero, Camarillo, California, 93010. I defer to my daughter.
Okay, great. Okay, I'll open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commission.
Familiar with this because this is my neighborhood and stuff, and I can't believe that the existing, the old Farmer's Market inside is still going to remain open. And what are the hours of this Farmer's Market going to be outside?
The old Farmer's Market inside is now closed, actually. And so that's why we started one outside that closed, I guess. I wouldn't know, a year or two ago.
About a year and a half ago, we lost Tom's Farms, yes.
So the hole inside shut?
No, no, no. The swap meet is there. The swap meet is there. But we did have a Farmer's Market inside. But it was, it was a single vendor selling produce. And he closed a year and a half or so ago.
Yeah, I didn't go in there too often. So you're going to bring Tom's outside?
Yeah, we actually have Joe Van Dyke Farms outside now instead of Tom's. And we are up on Decatur on Fridays from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. And on Sundays from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Okay, and that's not going to interfere with any of the traffic going into the mailbox place?
No, we're, we're right up on Decatur. So we're some 350 feet away from the post office.
Okay.
And we have a 10-foot barrier in between both the driving entrances so that we don't interfere with any of the traffic. And I have barricades up indicating pedestrian area to take care of.
Okay, so, well, I look forward to frequenting there. So my motion, when everybody's finished, will be for approval when everybody's done.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you. My motion will be for approval of SUP 49086, following all staff's recommendations. And I'd like to have a one-year review on that, please. Administrative.
Please vote.
Good luck to you. I hope it works out up there.
Thank you.
Please post. Motion for approval carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go forward to the July 24 City Council meeting.
All right, thank you very much.
Good night. Item number forty-two, SUP 49152. Applicant is Walmart Stores, Inc. Owner is WRI Charleston Commons LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off-sale within an existing 118,348-square-foot general retail store at 201 North Ellis Boulevard in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. And staff, can we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off-sale use will be located within existing Walmart as an accessory use. The proposed use can be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner with the uses in the existing site and with the commercial uses on adjacent properties. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could hear from the applicant, please, and if we could have your names and addresses?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the commission. Andy Moore, 100 North City Parkway, on behalf of the applicant Walmart Stores. And with me to my left is my colleague Alyssa Nate Worth. And with me to my right is the store manager of the Walmart, Sherry Williamson. And obviously, we are in agreement with the staff's report, and we're hopeful that the commission votes for approval of this. It's obviously, it's an existing Walmart store. It's been open since 1987. They're looking to do an interior remodel of the store. Right now, they currently sell limited food products. They're going to do a remodel in which they're going to sell additional food items, baked items, have produce section. And in conjunction with that, they want to actually be able to sell, obviously, packaged liquor, beer, wine, and liquor. There isn't any protected uses within 400 feet of the facility. It's in compliance with the, with the Development Code, and we recommend, or we're hopeful that the commission votes for approval.
Thank you. I'll open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Please state your name and address.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I have no problem with this. But about a year ago, they came and applied to put an addition on this thing. And I wonder when they're going to do that because they need more room down there. They took out the McDonald's, but still, that place is really crowded in there. But still, they were going to put, I remember they got a variance to put it on the, on the side and everything, and I don't see any action going on down there.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? Ma'am, state your name and address, please.
Susan McMasters with Wine Garden Realty, 860 South Rancho Drive. I am the regional property manager for the owners of the property, and I am the manager of that facility or the entire shopping center. And we are in favor of this approval.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? Sir, if you'll state your name and address, please?
Good evening. Martin Dean Dupalo, 209 Oakford Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. I've lived in this neighborhood for the past 33 years, less military service. I live at 209 Oakford Street. There is no closer place to our family's home than this particular Walmart. I strongly oppose allowing Walmart attempting to place a high-volume hard liquor store in my neighborhood once again. Four and a half years ago, Walmart attempted this same effort. It was dismissed by City Council on a 7-0 vote with prejudice. Within approximately a mile and a half of my family's home are several dozen liquor outlets. In my neck of the woods, we have become oversaturated. This is, as best I can tell, somewhat unique to my area. According to Metro, over the past three years in the Northeast Area Command, which encompasses my area and that Walmart, we've had over, pardon me, 2,600 DUIs. It's a substantial amount. When I opposed this some four years ago, I showed City Council DUI versus home in my particular neighborhood, on my particular street, DUI versus my car in front of my house, DUI versus the bus stops surrounding in my neighborhood, DUI versus bridge, DUI versus walls, DUI versus fences. Basically, this is the same thing. And I wonder why Walmart is so insistent to come back four years later to get that hard liquor license in our neighborhood. They already sell beer, wine, and coolers. I understand that. But I don't understand their need to have a hard liquor outlet in my neighborhood, in my family's neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I need to make one quick disclosure. The applicant's represented by the firm of Brownstein Hyatt Farber. They have and occasionally still do some intellectual property work for one of my companies. I haven't talked to an attorney there in forever and a day. So I know I haven't discussed this item and feel comfortable voting on it.
Thank you. Anybody wish to be heard? Commissioner Goines?
Just to answer the gentleman's question, the answer to that is typically because you're in a high-minority brown community down there. And typically, all retailers target minority communities heavily, even more heavily with alcohol and uses like that. That's why they're so persistent.
Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Chairman. You know, I feel a lot of the DUI-related cases and stuff isn't coming from the local liquor store. I mean, that's just my personal opinion. I mean, it's coming from the bars, it's coming from the barbecues, it's coming from drinking too much while you're out having a meal and, or drinking at your house and then trying to head out. I'm not sure if, if we could prove that very many DUI cases are stemming from the particular liquor store and them drinking out in the parking lot. So, I mean, I don't have any scientific data on that either. Personally, I would much rather prefer going into a grocery store and buying a bottle of liquor than going to some of these liquor stores around the community. It just feels safer to me. And plus, it allows me to pick up my groceries and certain things like that. So I don't have as big of an issue. And personally, I just don't see the correlation between the DUIs and offering liquor in any of those types of establishments.
Thank you. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. We have grocery stores in this area. We have drugstores that sell liquor. We've approved, you know, almost every type of operation here. But Walmart is a major employer. They're, they're doing a major renovation. They've been here for an incredibly long time. I, I would hope, I would, I would really hope the city of Las Vegas and this commission would not be saying liquor's okay there because they are minorities or of color or something. I, I truly believe, if you come to Summerlin, we got liquor establishments. We have some of the largest liquor stores in this town built out there. There's DUI all over this valley. There's liquor sales all over this valley. And I, I wouldn't think it's some insult to your neighborhood. This is a major company, one of the largest retailers in the world. And the same thing, we would provide most other retailers in that area, grocery stores included. I, I don't see why we shouldn't allow even the greatest of retailers a level playing field. So I will support your item.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bolner?
Well, here's something I'm, I'm going to disclose, but I'm not sure I really want to. I've purchased liquor in Walmarts and grocery stores as well. The fact is, it's packaged liquor, which I, I think is a little different in terms of serving versus bars. So I'm actually more comfortable buying my liquor in a packaged situation than in a bar situation. So I'm going to support the application.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else wish to be heard? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair? Pardon me?
Sir, we're, all right, go ahead.
I apologize. This was not properly noticed. In fact, if you look at, if I may show you here. Is it in the center? When you first put out the planning, we were asked to send these cards back to Planning and Development Department. This was referred to earlier, about two hours earlier. And the return request service states 731 South Fourth Street. In fact, it reads, "If you wish to file your protest or support this, check the box, mail it back to Planning and Development at 731 South Fourth Street." So this has not been properly noticed. I brought this to the attention of the planning department about 10 days ago. So this is not something that's new. This is something I brought to their attention.
Okay, we're going to stay consistent with earlier today and talking with staff just a moment ago. I would like to entertain a motion that this be held for 30 days so that it can be properly noticed.
Chairman, on item 42, SUP 49152, I would make a motion to hold this item in advance for 30 days. Do I need to state the particular meeting? Which will be July 9.
Thank you. Please post. Motion to move it to the next meeting carries. Moving on to item number 44. I'm going to be abstaining on this matter because I sit on the Board of Directors for Goodwill Industries as well as the Executive Committee. So once, one more time tonight, Commissioner Goines, I'm going to call upon you to handle this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make a disclosure as well. My company, Workforce Connections, provides funding to Goodwill, but we provide it to the program portion in this as a request for the industry. So I feel that I can vote on this.
I think that's correct. And given the situation of the chairman, he actually works on the board and has fiduciary duty to the board. And therefore, it would be hard to separate that business interest from the applicants before you. You do not have that kind of fiduciary duty. You merely have a relationship that from time to time you provide funding. As a result, I think disclosure is appropriate, but not abstention.
Thank you. Item 44, SUP 49166, special use permit. Applicant, Goodwill Industries of Southern Nevada. Applica, Goodwill Industries of Southern Nevada, owner, Centerpoint Plaza LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed thrift shop at one zero three hundred West Charleston Boulevard, Suite Number One, Ward Two beers. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, as a thrift shop is similar to other type of retail uses found in a shopping center and permitted in the Village Center Land Use District of Summerlin without condition, staff recommends approval. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Applica?
Chairman, Commissioners, George Garcia, seventeen eleven, Whitney Mesa Drive, Suite one-ten. Pleasure to be before you. Along with me, Alan, if you'll introduce yourself.
Alan Reeves, twelve eighty West Cheyenne, eight nine oh three oh.
Alan is the basically director for retail sales for Goodwill, and I am chairman of the board for Goodwill. And here with, before you with the new product, if we can go to the overhead, this is, this is a totally new product. So, when we say Goodwill, often we think of the great stores we have around the valley that, you know, we take in gently-used goods and create jobs. What this particular product is, is a new product. It's a boutique, and the boutique is designed for a lot of the, a lot of people today that are looking for higher-end fashion, take the gently-used goods that are higher-end products, and we put them in there. So, we're looking at this kind of interior look and feel, and this deja vu concept has been introduced in other places around the country. Other Goodwills have used it. It's very successful. In fact, our landlord here was very, made sure when they scrutinized us at great length, and they're here tonight, the property managers here and the realtors here, but they scrutinized the project to make sure that this was a good fit for their, for their shopping center. And we're happy and thrilled to be having this as introduced into this center. And talking with one of the neighbors who'll be here briefly, there were some discussions we've had with him and some concerns about the possibility of donations coming in here and the traffic. So, let me just explain briefly that first off, this is not a donation center. We do have, as you know, the trailers around the valley where we take in goods. At some of our stores, they are considered attended donation centers where you actually pull in and you can drop off. This facility is not. This is a much smaller facility. It's not designed to basically be a primary location for drop-off of donated goods. If somebody brings them in, certainly we'll accommodate them, but we're not advertising it, we're not putting it on the building, but if somebody brings them in, we will take donate. But it is not a donation center per se. As far as traffic goes, at the rear of the building, because we do have residential, this whole shopping center has residential across the street to the north. We're located, as you can see on that, on that far western with the blue box around it, the, that particular location is the entire shopping center across the street from the residential, but separated by a street. But you can see the entry drive, some of the traffic comes through there as well as to the, to the south and east and the west. There's a lot of direct opportunities for traffic to disperse, but some does come through there, and clearly, there are some deliveries to the rear. The good news is, as a Goodwill, this kind of facility, we're probably looking at about three trucks per week, on average, per week. So, if this were a restaurant, a breakfast restaurant, there'd be far more food deliveries. There's a restaurant down the street, truck every day, fifty-footer type trucks. This, our trucks are the small trucks, they're not the tractor-trailers. So, we don't have a lot of traffic, we don't have a lot of noise compared to other, other uses, and our operating hours, so you know, are from nine to nine. Employees are there earlier so that if somebody brings something in, it gets picked up and taken in. We also operate a truck that runs throughout the valley and, or trucks that drive by. So, if somebody were to come during the middle of the night, for whatever reasons, and drop something off, we want to make sure that unlike some collection boxes where you find things sitting out in front of the collection box, that does not occur. It gets picked up by the truck and taken away, so to maintain a great appearance for all of our facilities, and we certainly do that with our employees during the day as well. With that, Mr. Chairman, we certainly concur with staff's recommendation for approval and be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and we'll let our neighbor come and speak as well. Thank you.
Rob Werhola, ten three-three-nine, Juniper Creek. I don't know if I'm on the overhead or not. I live right here across from the driveway. This is Park Run, this is Town Center, and this is the proposed location. I live right here, and what I'm opposed to is a donation drop-off site. I think that adds a lot of traffic. I know right along Park Run here, there's a lot of traffic. There's a lot of fender benders right here at this intersection right here. In fact, Monday, there was a, I heard screeching tires when I was on my back patio. This drive aisle already is a problem. When you're driving in here, there's a lot of traffic and cars backing in and out, and I've had a couple of close calls myself, and I think it's a mistake adding two five-minute parking spaces for donations and drop-offs. I think that the fact that there is going to be a drop-off center is going to add a lot of traffic to this, this drive aisle and also to this intersection right here. I'm also concerned about the hours of the drop-off. I know in their write-up, they had hours for dropping off, I think it was seven to ten, which is not consistent with their business hours, which they're saying is nine to nine. They anticipate after-hour drop-offs. They wanted to have an employee there from seven AM till ten, and they also want these sweeper trucks to go by, and so what I'm concerned about is that people will know that there's donations accepted there, and they'll go to that location and then at all hours and then drop off whatever, and then it'll be sitting there, which will attract, I think, you know, people, might attract people, but also, then you have these sweeper trucks coming in at all hours, I think at midnight is what George said, going possibly down Park Run, past my house to pick up this stuff. And I don't know why they need a donation center at this location. I think that they can do their donations somewhere else and their sorting somewhere else and then bring their designer clothes and other items into the store that way. I just think it's a mistake to have this donation drop-off thing at the site, and what I'm asking for is that, that aspect of this application be denied, that there be a sign placed out in front of the store that no donations are accepted at this location. And then, one more aspect of this donation is when someone comes and donate a bag of clothes, they're not going to donate just designer items, it's going to be a bunch of different things that'll have to be sorted in the room, and then those things will have to be taken to their other location, which means they'll have to have another truck come in and back to pick up the non-designer items, to transfer those items out to other locations. So, I think that this idea that they can have these two parking spaces for drop-off and donations at this location is just a bad idea. It's bad for the neighborhood, it's going to add traffic, it's going to add items, after-hour items, drop-off, and I'm very much opposed to that, that aspect of this application, and I'm asking you to deny that part, and I'm asking for signage so that people know that there's no donations accepted at that location. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, thank you. First off, in a previous life, this, this particular suite was being used by Blockbuster Video, so there were a lot more pickups and drop-offs occurring on a regular basis here than what Goodwill will certainly create. And again, this is not a donation center. We don't advertise it, we don't post it, but we know that if people bring something, we certainly are in the business accepting gently-used goods to create jobs throughout the community. Property Management Company, this is a shopping center, a high, a very good-quality shopping center in a great neighborhood, they're going to be very critical in scrutinizing everything we do. But again, from a traffic impact standpoint, community relations, we're probably one of the lower-impact uses that you could have from a retail standpoint compared to certainly to a restaurant or Blockbuster Video. And again, I think, you know, we passed the scrutiny of the landlord and would certainly appreciate your scrutiny and approval.
Thank you. Is there anybody else would like to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, or, excuse me, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Sandy Ray, nineteen seventy Village Center Circle, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one three four. I represent the landlord. We're very excited about this concept coming in because it is not a typical Goodwill, not that that would be bad, but this is a boutique store. I actually visited a similar concept in Cherry Creek, Colorado, in the Denver area, and it was amazing. I would not have believed I was in a Goodwill store or even a second-hand merchandise store. It was very well-designed, the people working there were really nice. You would think you were in an upscale boutique in any nice shopping area in Summerlin or anywhere else. We have very strict language in our lease regarding this use, and, you know, we have looked at all of these things that were mentioned tonight as far as possible issues, and we feel that we have covered everything so that it will be very well-maintained, there won't be stuff piled up outside. So, we really feel that we have covered most of these issues to our satisfaction, and this landlord is extremely particular, so I think that it would be a great success in the Summerlin area.
Thank you very much for your comment. Anyone else like to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open it up to the commissioner, Commission for Comments. Commissioner Bonar, this is in your ward.
A couple of things. I don't have any problem with the high-end merchandise being, being offered in this location. I actually, I've been to that center a number of times. It's a little tight, some of the, some of the traffic movements in that area, so I share that, that concern as well. As for the landlord or the management of the center, we can't enforce your lease provisions, so we have to basically disregard that. I, I think we need to be proactive on how we deal with the drop-off center issue, I really do. And dedicating two parking spaces is probably a bad idea because it's going to look like a drop-off center. If it looks like a duck, you know what I'm going to say. I think we ought to actually prohibit a drop-off and let the employees deal with the people that come in with their plastic bag full of whatever. So, I'm also interested, and probably this is the only visual thing, signage. If it's the typical Goodwill sign, I think we're going to get more typical Goodwill attendance. If there's a sign that you could, sorry, join the new generation and have it promote your flagship location, I'd be more inclined to look favorably. And I'll pause.
Anybody else like to speak on this item? Commissioner Trusdale?
Yeah. Mr. Er, Commissioner Goins, I've known this developer for probably twenty-plus years. He is absolutely the most rigid developer I've ever dealt with, and I've seen him take the biggest companies and make them do things they would have never done to make their centers the best. This center has been almost entirely leased since the day it was completed. With the video store going out, I had some serious reservations when I just saw the Goodwill, and, but, in looking at the, and I, I was not in favor of that in this area because I think the neighbors have a expectation of something better, and not, not different, but better, and it's just the type of center it is. But the boutique aspect that you have presented does provide a, a different opportunity in gently-used goods is a great deal. I do have the, like, like Commissioner Bonar, I do have the concerns about the drop-off. I think that is, is a potential hurdle, but I'm, I'm more impressed with what was presented this evening because this wasn't what I totally expected.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Seeing any more questions or comments, at this time, I'll entertain a motion on item forty-four.
I'll make a motion on item forty-four to follow staff's recommend, recommendations for approval on SUP four-nine-one-six-six, following all of staff's recommendations for approval on, on that item. Thank you.
Motion on the floor is for approval. Commissioner Bonar?
Yeah, I don't know if I'm out of line or not, but I, I don't think I, I can vote on this unless we have some control over the drop-off center issue, and...
Would you like to add a condition?
I'd, I'd like to, but I'd like some help on how to structure it because it's foreign to me right now.
Well, I'm sure we could help you.
Well, I think Commissioner had a motion on the floor, so you may want to just withdraw your motion.
I'll just, yeah, here's what we'll do. I'll withdraw the motion as long as we keep it passed, and then you figure out when you want the stuff dropped off and picked up, and it'll go, it'll work out perfectly.
Well, I think proper procedure is to withdraw the motion and then allow Commissioner Bonar to add his additional condition or craft it and then proffer up another motion.
Okay, I'm going to withdraw my motion at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Director?
If I might just jump in here very quickly. We do have a condition of approval on this item relative to the hours of donation because that had been a question that was raised as part of the public input. Condition number two specifically states that all donations shall be received during open business hours. So, donations can only occur during business hours, cannot occur at any other time. Relative to the concern about parking spaces being designated for donation, what you might do is just craft a condition that states essentially that no parking spaces shall be dedicated for the use of donations, which I think would cover basically your intent. Mr. Attorney, if you have any...
I think that's right. I think you might also want to add that donations only occur inside the store, there won't be any drop-off box outside or any receptacle or anything like that. So, all donations occur only within the store during operating hours and no designated spots for drop-off patrons.
Mr. Chairman, those are all, all acceptable and make perfect sense.
May I comment?
No, sir, the public hearing section is closed.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonar, I think you've got enough text to craft your new condition, if you would, please.
Well, it does, but I'm not sure it deals adequately with the, the drop-off issue completely. I was, I guess I was, I was trying to leave it to the employees, to the management of the center and the, and the store itself to deal with it because if I have my druthers, I wouldn't allow any drop-offs to be taking place here. That, that's the difference between your flagship location and the other locations. I'll try a motion, and we'll see where it goes.
Okay.
Let me get the right number.
It's item forty-four.
A move to approve SUP forty-nine-one-six-six with the if-approved conditions to be amended to prevent any dedicated spaces for parking or, and/or drop-off, to have no drop-off at any hours of the day. I guess that's it.
Well, Commissioner Bonar, if I could, I think Director offered up a motion which said no spaces for donations. So, to me, that would mean that the parking spaces within the interior of this center cannot be used for donations as well as in addition, he said, inside the store. So, to me, that, if that was posted, that means that I can't stop in that shopping center, park, and go in and drop off a donation at that store. And I, I think that gets you to where you're trying to get, is it not, does it not?
Well, if I might just say something, if that's the route you're going to take, it, it's going to be just as dangerous of people coming from ten different locations, bringing all this stuff over in different cars to put stuff in the store. I mean, the, the answer is, is for people to bring their stuff up to the back of the store, to drop it off, and that's the end of the story. You can't let people come from all over town to drop it off because then you're going to have more pedestrian problem than you have what you're facing now. I mean, I go to these stores all the time, I've never been ran over. It's ridiculous.
Commissioner Bonar?
Let me completely redo my motion. Move to approve SUP forty-nine-one-six-six with staff conditions, no dedicated parking spaces for drop-off, and that the hours of donation be limited to the store hours. Period.
Let me ask the applicant, can you agree to that condition?
I, I think we can agree to that condition, and I, and if you want, we could add the one that says no outdoor, there's no outdoor boxes, I think, that the, the city attorney offered, we'd certainly accept that as well.
Right. I think if we look... I think if we looked at all donations would be in-store.
That would be acceptable.
And if that's posted, I think you're, we get where everybody's concerns are.
I'm starving.
Not to complicate this, but to the maker of the motion and to the applicant, to deal with the adjacent residents' concerns, would you have a problem with a one-year review just so we have a chance to see how this is going and if there's any concerns that we should be looking at as we look at these going, in other locations going forward?
That would certainly be, I think, reasonable, and we would accept that.
Let me ask the Director, are you okay with the motion?
Let me just clarify the motion that Commissioner Bonar has made. Number one, there would be an added condition that there be no dedicated spaces for drop-off. The second one is essentially reiterating condition number two. So I don't think that needs to be an added condition. You said the hours of donation shall be limited to store hours. We already have that condition in place in the staff report. And so those were Commissioner Bonar's condition, and so it would just be one added condition about the dedicated spaces for drop-off. There was also the request that there be a required review in one year. We just need to clarify, is that an administrative review or do you wish that to be a public hearing here at Planning Commission?
Well, there's two things then. One is that I would like an administrative review in a year, but I'd also like to add the in-store donation location unless that's already in the.
Okay. What I would recommend then is that we amend condition number two to indicate that all donations shall be received during open business hours and shall be restricted to in the store. All donations shall occur within the store.
Okay, and there's no drop-off boxes anywhere in the center?
Okay, and then that would be an added condition that there be no outdoor drop-off boxes.
Thank you.
So hopefully, that's clear to all of the Commissioners.
So there's a motion on the floor for approval. Commissioner Bonar has added some new conditions. Those have been read into the record by the Director of Planning, and cast your votes. A yes vote is for an approval on item 44. And that motion has passed, showing the Chairman fling a sustaining.
Chairman Commissioners, thank you and good night.
And please note that this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Turning it back over to the Chairman for item 45. Thank you, Commissioner Goines. We'll go to item number 45, which is SDR 49169. Applicant owner is 1201 South Las Vegas Boulevard LLC for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a parking lot with waivers to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along the west and south perimeters where eight feet is required, and to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along the north perimeter where 15 feet is required at 516 Park Paseo in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may I have a report?
Mr. Commissioner, the applicant is requesting a site development review to develop a commercial parking lot on an undeveloped parcel at 516 Park Paseo adjacent to the historic residential area of John S. Park neighborhood. The applicant has worked with staff to mitigate impacts adjacent to the property with the development of the C-1 Zone parcels. Specifically, a 20-foot wide landscape buffer will be installed along the east perimeter to adequately screen the single-family residential properties to the east. For this reason, staff recommends approval with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant? We have your name and addresses, please.
Mr. Chairman, before we go forward, I'm going to abstain on this item inasmuch as I own property within the notice area.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. If we could have your name and addresses, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Elon Gordetsky, and my address is 900 South Las Vegas Boulevard, Unit Number 1408.
Lizelle Prater, Prater Consulting Engineers, on behalf of the applicant. There's a couple of items that we would like to go over and how we got here, and try to make it quick since I know it's late in the evening. As was stated by staff, we have worked with the Commissioner, the Councilman, on this issue. We've met with him three times. He acted on behalf of the homeowners in the area, as he is one of them. Also, we met several times with the Fire Department, and through those goings-on is how we came up with this kind of odd configuration. The biggest issue was getting a fire truck, full-size fire truck, to the back of the existing Super 8 Motel and also to the adjacent properties to the south. That was very important to the city, especially to the Fire Department, and to gain that access and also provide a significant buffer from the existing homes, we came up with this configuration. We also understand that even though we are asking for a waiver on the west side of the property, there is a landscape buffer that will be there, an eight-foot landscape buffer, which is part of the approved development plan for the adjacent parcel. We are also not able to put any landscaping directly against the wall in our 20-foot landscape buffer due to some power lines and the low height of those lines. We agree with the conditions as set forth by staff, and at that point, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Now, open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Is this public parking or private parking? How are they going to make them dime out of this thing?
This is a leased property, and it would be for only the Super 8 Motel. There is an agreement in place which is in your packet.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Anybody wish to be heard? Commissioner Slotman?
Chairman, just a couple of comments. I met Elon, I guess, a year ago. You've been in front of us a couple of times and had a chance to walk your properties and doing a great job with them. And so I appreciate the money you're putting into that neighborhood and revitalizing. So I like the landscaping that you're putting in, the barrier between the residential properties and this parking lot. I just had a question. Your selection of trees over on the Park Paseo? It's a xylusma, and that's a, go ahead.
Those were actually recommended by the city as staff. We, you know, we may, when we come to development, if those are not available, approach the city with an equivalent product, as we do know that that is also hard to get.
Was that a recommendation by city planners? Or do we have an?
That was recommended by one of our city planners who's skilled in landscape architecture and has a degree in that.
Okay, all right. The only reason why I ask is because, I mean, I've seen these quite often, and I'm not saying I know any more about this than him, but they're scattered all up and down Texas, from South Texas all the way out to New Oasis County. And they're a bushy shrub, also known as a logwood, which is, grows up to typically five feet within the first year, eight to 12 feet within the first few years. They could get as high as 25 feet, but most of them top off at eight to 12 feet. And they're more of a, from the ones that I've seen, are more of a barrier. So it's going to create a barrier into that parking lot versus providing any pedestrian shade for people walking down the street, so.
One of the issues for that was to provide a barrier which goes along with the wrought iron fence just to try to keep pedestrians from coming through.
Okay, so if that is your goal, then you're on the right track.
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Chairman, on item number 45, SDR 49169, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval and conditions.
Please vote. Please post. Motion for approval carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody.
Mr. Chair, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days. Also, Mr. Chairman, I need to make a correction on an announcement I made on an earlier item. Going back to item number 17 on the agenda, I incorrectly announced that that item would be going forward to City Council on July the 24th. In actuality, that item is final action this evening in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you, Director. Good night, gentlemen. Okay, going on now to Director's Business. We'll begin with item number 47, which is TXT 48841. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas for possible action to update the Symphony Park design standards and Symphony Park schematic streetscape design to make various clarifications and corrections. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report?
Mr. Chairman, this text amendment will make those changes as you've read them into the record. Some of those items, there are still references to the previous name of Union Park. It's since been changed to Symphony Park. There's different materials and finishes for streetscapes that have been amended. Irrigation equipment requirements have been changed. There are quite a few other items that are in there regarding street names that have changed throughout the process, and this will bring the plan up to date. One additional thing we have done in this area is we have added the new standards for the temporary parking lot, which is part of the downtown Centennial Plan to be included in the Symphony Park Plan itself. Are there any questions? I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. I'll open this matter up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Commissioner Slotman? Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, we, part of our, the Symphony Park and part of the downtown Centennial Plan is the sustainable, renewable, and all of these standards. And I don't remember seeing this when we passed this originally, but there is a specific paver that has to come from a specific quarry in China. And somehow, I don't see how that benefits any company that's U.S.-based. I mean, just kind of, isn't that the only stone in the world that will make Symphony Park look good?
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and respond to that question. In terms of the materials that were chosen, there was the interest in having what is called low albedo paving materials. In other words, paving materials that don't retain heat. It's unfortunate that this paving material does come from China, but it has the added benefit of reducing the urban heat island effect, which was the intent. So again, it's unfortunate on one hand, but on the other hand, it does have a benefit.
I know NASA used to manufacture ceramic tiles that didn't retain heat.
Anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Chairman, move for approval of TXT 48841, item 47. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be forward to City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you. Going on to item number 48, which is TXT 49224. Applicant owner, City of Las Vegas. For discussion and possible action to amend LVMC 19.10.170 related to the LW-0 Live Work Overlay District by revising requirements, standards, and applicability, and to provide for other related matters. Staff is recommending approval, and Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, previously, a couple of months ago, you saw an amendment to our live-work overlay to allow them to go beyond the first floor, the commercial component. This is an additional amendment. We've been working with the Fire Department and the Building Department in order to even expand the live-work allowable uses beyond what they currently are. The current code basically allows you to do live-work units that you could do as a home occupation permit and really isn't that functional. So what this ordinance will do, it will provide more viable options by expanding the zoning districts, which they're permitted, and expanding the permitted uses within the units, within the confines of the building code and the fire code. It'll clarify the approval criteria for the process, and it will ensure compatibility of live-work units with surrounding adjacent uses. And if you have any other further questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. I'll open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Slotman?
Live-work was one of the first things that I learned about whenever I got to town. We actually built a live-work community. And it didn't necessarily work in the sense that we tried to make it work. We tried to make it in a single-family townhome community. So we restricted it to the perimeters not to exceed a home occupation permit. And, you know, I think this document right here clears up a lot of that confusion for developers coming in because it states that you can't have it in multifamily and tells you where you can and cannot do this, and actually makes it less restrictive in being able to apply to more uses. But during my research, I went back to find out how come we struggled so hard with the building code. Well, the building code that we were following was the International Residential Code. And the International Building Code is a code that you would follow for the live-work units. If you look at item, if you look at item four, it says no more than 50% of the total floor area of a live-work unit shall be designed or used for residential purposes. And there's conflicting information in the International Building Code. If you look at Section 419.1.1, it says the non-residential area is permitted to be a maximum 50% of the area of each live-work unit. So basically, the building code is saying the commercial can be a maximum of 50% of the live-work. But the code that we're trying, or the text amendment before us today, is saying the opposite. It's saying that no more than 50% of the total floor area shall be for residential purposes. So therefore, if we approve this, basically, every live-work unit that comes before us will have to be 50% residential, 50% commercial. And how's that apply to particular live-work units such as a jewel, which has already been constructed, and other projects coming up?
Mr. Chair, the Commissioner makes a good point. What I might recommend to the Commission this evening is that if you wish to approve this text amendment, that you might include a condition that the language pertaining to the percentage of residential use be consistent with the International Building Code.
Okay.
And we can make that change prior to City Council.
Okay.
One. Just one more question and clarification. The owner or lessee of the space will reside in the live-work unit that's under B1. And then if you go down to number four, residential use criteria, it states the residential occupancy of a live-work unit must include at least one person who is employed or carries out a non-residential occupation in the unit. So we're basically saying the same thing, but it sounds like in number four, they don't have to be an owner or lessee. Well, they have to be employed at, employed by whatever business operates out of there.
The goal here was to ensure that there was a residential component of the live work in one shape or another. I think that language is a little confusing, and we can clean that up as we move it forward. That was, our goal was to say somebody had to live there.
Right.
I think is what we were trying to say in both sections.
Okay.
And that's what the International Building Code says. Somebody has to live there to be a live work unit. Otherwise, it's a, otherwise, it's just a commercial unit.
Yes.
You should loan them that book for a few weeks.
Oh, they have plenty of them down at the city.
Actually, we have to borrow our book from the building department. They, we do not own one in the planning department. They're very expensive. They're...
Seriously, you should loan that book.
Okay. Anybody else wish to be heard? Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. The way this just, I just want to make sure it's consistent with what I thought. The live work units are in the lower floors. I mean, you just can't pick and choose something on the 20th floor and say that's a live work unit and have a commercial ingress and egress to it.
Yeah, the, what we did previously was allow the live work to expand beyond the first floor. Originally, our code indicated that live work had to be all on the first floor.
Right.
And couldn't expand above. And now, we allow it to expand above, but it still starts the ground floor for the retail or the commercial component. It wouldn't be a live work in the middle of the building.
And with the, when it comes to some of the live work uses, when, as we get other businesses downtown and the potential for organizations to be located here, can the live work units be used as private clubs or fraternal organizations?
I, I would need to think about that for a little bit, on how that would function with our use code. First of all, our fraternal organizations need to be recognized by the IRS pursuant to our Title VI of our code. So, just not anybody can say, I, you know, myself and Mr. Lowenstein here, for instance, want to start the Loyal Order of the Water Buffalo and say we're a private club. That doesn't work. We have to go back to the federal government to make that approval, much like the Elks have done and other fraternal organizations. You need that IRS approval to be such.
And we know how that's working right now.
Pardon me?
And we know how that's working right now.
Uh, well, yes.
It is conceivable that if the College of Southern Nevada expands downtown, there may be social organizations that are related to a college central location that may well want to go into a live work environment.
That could be possible. I'd have to look at it in more detail, depending on what the request is, but that could be a possibility.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Anybody else wish to be heard? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
And Chair through you, to Director, do I need to amend that language in my motion?
Yes. What I would recommend is that your motion include the added condition that the language relative to the percentage of residential and commercial uses be synchronized with the International Building Code. And then, your second concern was relative to, I've forgotten already.
It was relative to section B1, speaking of the owner, leasee of the space.
Okay.
Versus the other one saying...
And then, your second condition would be to clarify the, the language relative to the ownership residing in the unit, or the owner residing in the unit. And so, those would be your two conditions.
Okay. And item, on item 48, text amendment 49224, I would make a motion for approval with the edit condition that the language between the text amendment and IBC section 419 point 1 point 1 is synchronized. And the edit condition number two is that the, for the planning department to clarify the language between section B1 and section four as it pertains to, as it pertains to who can occupy the space.
Thank you. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, this item will go forward to the City Council in ordinance form with the two amendments as proposed by Commissioner Slottman.
Thank you. Item 50, TXT 49323. Applicant owner, city of Las Vegas. For discussion and possible action to amend LVMC Title 19 Unified Development Code, UDC, of the city of Las Vegas to revise and update procedures and definitions related to the issuance of permits for site grading and provide for other related matters. Staff has no recommendation. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, in the past, the city of Las Vegas developed a procedure that allowed early grading in spite of the fact that the code did not permit such. That practice continued until approximately 2010, at which time that practice ceased. The planning department did introduce a text amendment along with Public Works to provide a, and make it possible to do early grading procedures so that, that text amendment did not proceed forward at the time. There has been a request to reinstate that text amendment to provide a process for early grading prior to the issuance of final civil improvement plans or the final map. This text amendment will create such language to allow for that to occur with certain conditions and restrictions that certain requirements be met prior to that, and then the developer would be grading at their own risk during that time until such time as the final civil improvement plans or the final map has received its final signature. If you have additional questions, I'll be happy to try and clarify those for you.
Thank you. Now, open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard? Saying none, we'll close it to public comment, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Slottman?
Yes, Chairman, through you, I don't know if this should be directed towards Lucian or the planning department, but what's the concern with issuing early grading permits? I mean, the, the first concern would be that something gets revised on the plans, and then the developer has to go back and regrade. Is this something that the city has gotten trouble over, or not necessarily in trouble over, but developers coming back and pressing the city to not change your plans? I mean, what, if a developer wants to go at his own risk to, to work on early grading, I don't see why it couldn't be his, his or her discretion?
We haven't, when the procedure was done previously, we didn't encounter any issues within the jurisdiction of the city of Las Vegas regarding early grading permit procedures when they were being conducted prior to 2010. Once again, the same criteria that's part of this text amendment was part of that early grading procedure, and we didn't encounter any issues with that. Most of the studies are required and completed prior to that. The early grading procedure requires you to have your drainage study completed, your first line, blue line review of your civil improvements are completed. Basically, you're waiting for final signatures for MYLAR, which is the final step within the process of the early grading process. Some of the concerns that the development communities express to us regarding that is that some of their approvals from the outside agencies, the utility companies, are taking quite long, and they'd like to get their projects started with some early grading prior to getting those final approvals from the various utility companies. Some of the other concerns other jurisdictions have encountered in the state of Nevada is that some applicants, some developers have graded beyond what was submitted on an early grading plan and ended up with wet utilities next to each other. As you know, sewer and water lines, potable water cannot be in the same trench. That did occur in certain jurisdictions, and that's greatly frowned upon by the state, and those codes are administered through our health department here in the, in the city of Las Vegas.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else wish to be heard? Commissioner Bonner?
Actually, there's a, there's a two-part early grading issue. There are some people that like to go in and do early grubbing, sometimes to actually harvest plants that are going to be used as landscaping material. That's not what I call heavy grading, but that's preceding the early grading. So, I think they were trying to accommodate both with actually a difference that you can get in early to do the grubbing before you do the real grading.
And current code does permit the grubbing as it stands today. As a matter of fact, if you come in, you can get a clearing grub permit and then remove some of those plants and preserve them currently. What you can't do is go beyond that under our current code. This would permit you to be able to go beyond that to a certain level.
First...
Commissioner Truesdale?
Through you. It, it talks about one of the conditions, bond estimate has been approved and bonds posted. How do, how do you estimate and get complete bonds posted if you've got a waiver that says, you know, they can get this prior to the final improvement plan?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, through you. They have to submit their civil plans first, and with that first review of civil plans, currently, the building and safety department actually does a bond estimate review and, and generates a dollar amount for them to bond for. And so, after they have their first review of civil plans, they'll have a, or they should have a bond estimate for them.
Well, this is, they would have to have it posted. So, I, I just, I see a place for a gap here that, that could be, that you get a bond and then the actual plans get finalized, and there's some big discrepancy in the work. How, is there a mechanism to get additional bonding from the, that developer? Or is it the developer get to work on a lower bond that the city may not have the dollars to finish work on?
Well, through you again, Mr. Chairman, we usually get a typical 10% contingency on the bond amount. So, say there was something additional that wasn't bonded for, if it was within that 10%, we'd consider it covered, because they've already accounted for a 10% contingency on the bond. So, essentially, after you do the estimate and they post the bond, we have the money plus the 10%, what we think would cost the city to install those improvements.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve item number 50, TXT 49323, as approved, as proposed by staff.
Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be forwarded to City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you. Item number 51, TXT 49324. Applicant owner, city of Las Vegas. For discussion and possible action to amend LVMC 19 dot 02 dot 130 related to the subdivision design and improvement requirements by providing for additional discretion related to the timing of common area and off-site improvements, completion requirements, and provide for other related matters. Staff has no recommendation, and staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, under current code and, and procedure, the off-site and common areas are required to be completed with 75% of the completion of the buildings on a residential subdivision. This amendment would allow the director of Public Works or the designated director to allow additional permits above the 75% level to be issued, even if the common area and off-site improvements have not been completed, provided that there are certain requirements met. Previously, our bonding capacity was, and estimates were, quite low. We discovered that as the bubble burst on the housing market, and the city was required to complete quite a few half-completed projects, and those bonds were inadequate. Since that time, we've revised our bonding estimates and our bonding requirements, and we have brought them up to a better standard. With this, the, the departments that do administer this, the Department of Public Works and the Department of Building Safety feel as though in certain circumstances, the bond will cover that, and they can be allowed to proceed forward beyond the 75% part without having all of the offsites and common areas completed at that time. And the city feels as though the bond will cover that, and the risk to the city is minimal at that point. The advantage for the developer is that they can get their project going much quicker that way, as some of the infrastructure items don't, don't need to be installed until such time as after the homes are built. And I don't know if I can answer too many more questions about that. That's the best I understand this text amendment and how it functions. Possibly Lucian might have more, and Mr. Lowenstein, Peter Lowenstein, is also an expert in the 75% rule.
Thank you. We'll open this up for public comment. Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, with, when you look at, under the proposed amendment, section two, it talks about open space, trails, parks. If, even if the bonds are good, getting a developer not to do those improvements and they're, they're pulling permits and building into the last level of homes, there's a point where the developer has no incentive to finish those. And I think this is a pretty slippery slope, considering the, just tonight, the number of unfinished projects that came back before us, where developers saying, "I wasn't the guy that started this, but I'm the guy here finishing it." And we're just along for the ride in some of these cases. And in, in past busts in the home building business in this community, which is not immune to them, the city was handed unfinished parks, they had to finish them. No bonds to cover it, no maintenance for it, street improvements that may be incomplete, and the contractor has gone south. I'm not saying that it's a bad world out there, it's just, why would we want to get that far ahead of letting them build into it? Because no matter how, the city is the one that people are going to look to, "Well, this is a mess." Everybody's pointing each other, and we've got a jigsaw of streets or a sawtooth of streets that aren't finished. So, I really think this, the other amendments that came before us are pretty straightforward, but this one starts to get to where the developers don't have to finish enough of the project to cover what they're building.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bonner? Anybody else wish to be heard? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve item 51, TXT 49324, as proposed by staff for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, this item will go forward to City Council in ordinance form.
Last item, citizens' participation. Item 52. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No... No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time, any single speakers allowed, may be limited.
Mr. Chairman-
Thank you. Mr. Chairman- Just a moment, Mr. Farlow. Commissioner.
Before Mr. Farlow comes up, probably because everybody assumes the meeting's over when he's done, I wanted to take a moment and propose an action that the council might actually consider. One of my peeves is every time we get somebody down here who did construction without a permit, just bugs me, always bugs me, has always bugged me. I think we ought to consider having double the fees when they do are, are caught, when they are caught, and made to go get their, their permit fees. Helps the budget, helps my conscience, and I'm thinking it would help the city. Thank you.
And Chairman.
I agree.
Chairman. May I make one comment?
Commissioner Sloman?
That is what the building department's doing now. If you get built, building without a permit, you get double fees. And not only the person who didn't pull the permit, every contractor, subcontractor associated with that permit will have to pay double fees. The homeowner would have to pay double fees, but what's a fence permit? A hundred and fifty bucks? So, it, yeah. And the, the other thing that the Building and Safety Department's doing, if you're a contractor caught without, without a permit on hand, they'll turn you into the contractors' board. If you're a homeowner, building it on your own, the homeowner's board? I'm not sure.
Thank you. Mr. Farlow?
Yeah. Now, Commissioner Bonner, now, on, on item number forty-four, you sit there struggling with the language, struggling and struggling, trying to come up. All you had to say, "We don't want that riffraff like Farlow down there driving through my neighborhood depressed in the fort, in the property values." That's all you had to say. Everybody understands that.
Saying no further comment, this meeting is adjourned.